And we'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. This is an invitation for our citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Okay, hearing none. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or requests or questions? Without an objection, we will accept it as printed. Consent agenda items. Do you want to name them there, Stephanie? Approval of the minutes? Approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personal action notice, approval of report of personal action, approval of human service report. Is there any question or something you want to discuss, pulled, changed? Okay, hearing none. Without objection, we will accept them as printed. Routine business, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve? Grobman Miller to approve claims. Any question or discussion on the claims before, in the packet and before you?
I set out some corrections. The top one was corrections and then there was another claim that we submitted. The check was cut yesterday for the eight county meeting. And that's it.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the claims, say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Department head reports. Joyce?
Good morning. Whoops. Short and sweet. First of all, I would like to introduce Karina Erickson. She is our new field person with the South Dakota Department of Revenue. So she will be doing kind of the short east half of the state. And she started with the department in January. And you were, she was an appraiser in Lincoln County for...
Two years.
Two years. So she's never been a director. And so she is here today to, she's never been to a commission meeting. So I invited her to the commission meeting and she's going to spend the day and we're going to go through how to do an abstract, how to work on county boards, how to do abatements, some of the things that she never had the privilege of doing in Lincoln County. So we're going to give her a short course in what directors do. And just, the abstract has been delivered, thanks to Vicki. She saved us postage and so she took the abstract out to Pier last week during her workshop. Last Tuesday, we had about 60 appraisers in this room. And it worked out fantastic. We had a gentleman from the Pennington County office, he's the deputy director, and he had put together a short workshop on quality of homes. And he, he did it for their office because they had hired so many new appraisers. And then he did it for the West River and invited everybody. And I had asked him, couldn't you come east so we'd all don't have to travel? So he was gracious enough to come to Brookings last Tuesday and we had, they had 20 West River and we had over 60 East River. So it was well worth the request to have him come. And it was from about 9:30 to noon. And as you all know, we have to have X amount of workshops to keep our accreditation. And when you can get a good workshop that teaches something besides sales ratio, it's great. So we had a good morning and it was very, very successful. So. And following that, I had the new director from Hughes County, Melissa Flotmeyer, brand, brand new, no guidance in the office. And so she spent the afternoon here learning how to do a few things. So I'm in the teaching mode right now. So hopefully Brookings County doesn't mind that we help other counties. So that's, that's about it.
Was probably a poor example as the chairman of this commission, as the commission meetings go. So don't think all commissions run this way. But you have an excellent teacher and some of our other staff that you'll probably bump into, excellent teachers.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to come up and spend the day with you. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
I think you can probably get into the consulting business when you decide that you want to retire.
I talked to her about that maybe last week. That's what we did talk about.
It's been, it's been discussed.
Probably more lucrative too.
We'll see where that light leads me. So.
Well, in 20 years from now, that consulting business should work out fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Sonia. You have something you want to fill us in on?
Well, good morning. I believe I missed the deadline, but I called up and asked Michelle to add a calendar to all of your spaces. Did you get one of those? Okay. Well, it was just a large Excel spreadsheet. She was going to print it out. If not, I'll make sure you get it here after this morning. But the summer calendar is out. If you really can't wait to see it, it is online. And Commissioner Pierce has one. She stopped into the office last week. Things are going steady and we'll keep moving through August. I was up last, right before the state, for a state 4H shoot that was out in Fort Pier. And since returning, we will have five Brookings 4H members, six, six 4H members representing Brookings County at the national shoot in the end of June, first part of July in Grand Isle, Nebraska. So that's exciting to have such sharp shooters from our county. And not that, you know, obviously we have a lot more than six 4H members that are participating, but that's a nice representation from our county for one state. So we have kids that are checking out some equipment so they can maintain their skills and perfect a couple maybe between now and then. We had our market sheep, goat, and swine weigh-in last night, although it was a little cool. It still took about four hours, but they all got weighed and, and tagged. And so we should be on the closing ends of getting animals registered and ready for this year's Achievement Days and State Fair. Other than, we did that in the holding barn.
Okay.
Yep. And other than that, like I said, that calendar is chock full of things that are coming up. Feel free to stop in at any one of them and see what our 4Hs are doing and experiencing in their careers. Oh, yes. And I do have some summer programming outside of those 4H events that are on that calendar as far as programming at the Boys and Girls Club and some programming at the base program in Sioux Valley School. So it's looking to be full.
Do I have our numbers right? That we have about 200 4Hers that are in the shooting program? About 100 went to Pier and six are making it to, are these the finals?
There's about 150 that are doing shooting sports. I really don't know how many went to Pier. I suppose 100 is probably pretty close. We are having our shooting sport award recognition on Tuesday after Memorial Day, where several others will be recognized for their shooting at the state shoot. I brought home a bag of awards. But only senior 4H members are eligible to participate on a national team. So you have to be at least 14. So we had some others that placed very high in their, their discipline, but only shoot, only seniors.
Is that both archery and?
Archery and guns. We, actually, none of those individuals are going to nationals on archery. Their muzzle loading, which that took place back in September, 22, take it back, one archery. And I think three 22s and two muzzle loading and one archery.
Do you know, if you don't know, I'm just asking off the top of your head, the breakdown between the male, female participants in that program?
Not off the top of my head.
That'd be something if you were willing to share with us, that would be helpful to see if we're providing opportunities for both genders.
Well, the oppor, of that group that's going to Pier, or not Pier Nationals, I think three of them are girls.
Sounds good.
I know for sure two of them are. I'm trying to remember who the other muzzle loader was. Are there any, any additional questions, anything I should be aware of before leaving today's meeting?
I was, I would have said this in my report, but I'll say it now because I think it's timely. So I was out at SwifTeL for a meeting last Thursday and stopped at the resource center and got my calendar. But I talked to Sonia a little bit about the sheet rock problem, those holes in the wall in the hallway. And then after I was done talking to her, I talked with Dave Bitler from SwifTeL. And he said they will start working on those repairs this week.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thanks for stopping.
You're so welcome. Have a good day.
Yep. Like to be kept up to date. Well, we'll go down the road pretty much till I skip Vicki. But Bob Hill?
Good morning, Commissioners. The, we're going to request that the burn ban be lifted later in the agenda. The, I attended a volunteer donations management class in Sioux Falls. And in my thing I misspelled, but what we're going to do is keep you informed of the progress as my progress proceeds. Because after the tornado in Delmont, we found a lot of interesting things. That's going to be a good case study for the rest of the state for small, smaller towns. And we're going to take what we learned in Sioux Falls during that local volunteer management class and see how we can apply it in Brookings. And I'll keep the board updated on that. The City of White lost its siren due to an electronical malfunction. The siren's approximately 50 to 60 years old. It's an old civil defense siren, every bit of my age, if not, if not older. And we researched into getting some state grants and as of now, there are none available. We, so that issue may come before this board sooner or later if they, as they're trying to replace their siren. It is bad timing for a siren to go out during this time of the year, obviously. So I just wanted to keep you informed on that. And Commissioner Jensen may have more on that. I am meeting this afternoon with the United Way at 2:00 PM to discuss our local emergency operations plan and that donations management portion of it. There's, there's no sense in reinventing the wheel. When we got the stuff in Brookings County to assist us in our local emergency operations plan, we're going to start tying, tying a lot of loose ends up. And after tonight, this afternoon's meeting, I should be able to have a good handle on more response. And maybe we'll have a work session sometime just on the emergency management side so I can explain to you the concepts and direction I recommend that we had. Homeland Security Grants are open as of Monday. I am going to a training session tomorrow in Sioux Falls. And as soon as I get back, we will put it on the website. Homeland Security Grants, of course, that has to be used towards something for homeland security. And typically law enforcement, the county, we could possibly request money for, for siren, but it's going to be that money, chances of that money being available before January slim and next to none. So, but we will, once we get that information on the Homeland Security Grants, we'll send that out to all the applicants that are eligible to apply for them so that they can, they can apply. That's all going to be computerized this year. It'll be online. My office will be able to track them, but my office, not all the grants have to go through my office at this time, but we do get to track them. Sanford's Emergency Management Conference is next week. That's, that's actually quite, you'd think it wouldn't be that good of a conference, but it's probably better than the State Emergency Management Conference because of the players they bring in with their, with their big health network. And June 11th, if you can put it on your calendar, that's our tentative date for our tabletop exercise after action review. Remember the big tabletop we had in March 12th? Well, we are trying to get all that finalized now. And FEMA's coming back on June 11th. It'll be in the morning. It's either going to be 8:00 to noon or 10:00 to noon, depending on how much information I can get from the participants before then. And then the goal is to be done on June 11th at noon so we can have our PPCC meeting and keep booking. It's our tabletop after action review.
After action.
That's where we sit down as a group and, you know, we saw the tabletop, we had our discussions, everybody made notes. And now we put it in writing and we have a plan to rectify some of the issues. Like maybe incident command training needs to be done in the community. Well, that's where we would put down either a six month or a 12 month window that we would accomplish that. Something that we can actually quantify and track. And it gives FEMA also, it allows FEMA to keep track of what they did and how, how they performed their exercise. And we got a local emergency planning committee meeting Thursday at Daktronics. I will have that agenda out later today. And we'll, we'll make sure that each commissioner gets emailed a copy of that agenda in case you're interested in attending. Any questions?
Two. Is anybody else? Well, go ahead, Leanne.
Was Brookings County involved at all in helping Delmont?
No, ma'am. That's, that's, that, we're broken up in the districts, emergency management districts, and that falls out of, out of our district.
On the siren, how much are we talking? And I'm just wondering what the other commissioners thought. It seems like something we don't want to be going without. And even if we can't get a grant. So what are we talking dollar wise and what are the commissioners?
Historically, in my records from the 90s, it shows that the county commission would participate and assist by paying one-third of the cost of a siren in the initial. Siren's going to cost approximately $12,000 to put in. So if that was the case, you're talking about $4,000.
Who's paying the other two-thirds? Who spoke normally?
Well, they would either get grant, federal grants, or the, the community would have to pay.
Bob, did you talk, did you happen to talk to the fire chief up there, Chris?
I talked to the fire chief, but we didn't talk money. So that $12,000 is just what I'm.
Right. $6,000 was sticking in my mind for some reason.
Oh, okay. There are, there are different types of sirens by all, by all means. And not, not all of them is as big as the ones we've got in the city of Brookings.
And I believe the City of White would pick up either half and then the fire department picks up the balance. And if the, like Bob said, if the county was willing for a third.
By all means. So if it's $6,000, then a third would be $2,000, which is a lot better than, than the other one, $4,000.
Well, I'm thinking it's an important item. And I was wondering if you could proceed with the visiting with the City of White. And, you know, if there's no grants, that means no grants for them either. So.
Correct.
I guess I don't want to tell them to spend money they don't have. But I would like to be put out notice that we're ready to participate the minute they are. Commissioners?
Yeah, I guess my thought would be this, that we could communicate to them, and this is just one, my opinion here. We may, one-third, maybe up to $12,000. And depending on what they're finding, what they have, have their abilities, if it's $6,000, we'll pay the two. But if it's up to 12 and they have that type of stuff, I don't have a problem doing something that would, we're good. And that way gives them the opportunity to go ahead and start working on it right away rather than coming back to another meeting and say, well, can the county help at all? I wouldn't mind just going on record saying we will.
Any dissent? Why, Seth, I, you know, I know Chris is working on it at this time. And I just told him that I'd bring it up to Bob if there was any potential for money from an outside source. So if you'd correspond with Chris to see where he's at, and the dollar amounts he's been getting bids and stuff, so.
Very good, Commissioner.
Bob, you indicated sometime earlier this year that, that there was a state program that you had some monies in that, that needed to be used for emergency management things. Is this suitable for some of those funds or no?
Unfortunately not, ma'am. That's for hazardous materials.
Just hazardous material? Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's, it's, it's an Environmental Protection Agency type, type grant.
Okay. And the last item on your staff report is your August 13th and.
By all means. And actually, that's.
Just want to point that out. That's a, next big project.
It is actually going to be even better than what I had imagined. I've got the City of Volga, we do have an exercise August 13th. It's a full-scale emergency operations center exercise, which means my, my staff of, or the county staff of people that's going to be in the emergency operations center in case, you know, what hits the fan. And then we're, we're going to have the pandemic planning committee over at the fire station as one of our players. And then we're actually going to have the City of Volga. And their city staff is going to be in their city hall as another player. So we get to, we get to see how it's where you're going to be. And we'll do up some scenarios. And I'll get the state emergency manager planning team together. And we'll, we'll have some scenarios stoned in there just to see what, what happens. And that's what exercise is for, is to find out where our weaknesses are and to get better.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
Well, Michael? See how we're doing? Good. 8:51.
Good morning.
Morning.
I, I don't know why. I'm, I've got a meeting tomorrow in Pier. And I've known about it for about two weeks. And for some reason, I can't get a travel request in. Maybe I just don't want to go to Pier. I'm not sure. But maybe it seems like I was just there two days ago. Anyway, for traffic coming into our office, that, that meeting will be with the welfare. Part of the catastrophic fund, when we, when it was set up, we're looking at is, is setting up regional trainings for all the county welfare directors. And this is, this is going to be finalizing the, basically the presentations that will be given. And, and so that all of the four district presenters will have the same information along with a PowerPoint for each one of them. And, and that'll be coming up in June. So I will get a travel request in beforehand on that one. In the meantime, I think it's a great idea. It's, it's something that, that's been talked about since I was hired by the county. And it just never seemed to, to come together. The new president of our County Welfare Directors Association is a, a young man out of Brown County. And he's a real, real go-getter. And he's kind of putting a lot of this together. So it should be, I think it's long overdue. And I think it'll be very good for all of us to make sure all the counties are on the same sheet of music. Okay. Well, the, the veteran side has been fairly quiet. And we're kind of happy with that. We did end up with 28 veterans stopping in since the last commission meeting. The welfare site is picking up a little bit. And it's kind of getting to that point where we're not having a lot of, of other places to go to get money. So I kind of anticipate that, that you might see more for utilities from our office coming in. In the last two weeks, we had 38 people stop in inquiring about different things with welfare. Like I say, that, that pool's getting a little bit smaller. So you'll notice in our report that we did have a few more utilities on there than, than before. Not two, I think only one or two more. Calls in 124, calls out 138. And next, the first part of next month, I will, the, the 30th, I'll be heading to Appleton, Wisconsin for a week-long training in the Veterans Affairs Site.
Any questions? Okay. Thanks, Mike. Well, we have six minutes to our first public hearing. Dick or Marty, do either one of you have a six-minute report?
Five minutes.
Oh, you're bringing a lot of paper with you. I'm not sure that's.
Pages of information. Good morning. Basically, Bo's finished paving on Highway 25 North, the Highway 30. Today, we're out re-establishing the approaches and intersections and stuff like that. And hopefully doing some shoulder work and cleaning up where we installed the new culverts. Next Monday, they will start on our Highway 77 project going north and also down on 24. You'll see the first probably signs of construction down on 24 where they're going to replace the, the box culvert under the intersection. Then hopefully that will move quite rapidly. However, this week, the airport project in, in Brookings got delayed because of a weather concern. And so there's a very good possibility that that will take precedence because it's a special mix that'll be going into that. So to make a long story short, once they get going with the milling and paving, it'll probably only be a two-week project on our portions. Then last, there's been concerns of, of signs and possibly addressing some of our signs. And, and one thing I thought I would bring for you because you hear so much talk of, of a MUTCD manual, that's this 800 and some page document that all highway departments at whatever level use as guidance and structure so that there's continuity and conformity throughout the United States. Every state in the Union has adopted this as their guideline. And so it's very important that we follow these guidelines that are in here. Also, you know, on a state level, there's different laws in statute 312817 and 312819 that refer to kind of what we have here, designation of a hazardous intersection and markings resembling official signs prohibited. In my addressing this issue, I, I've had very strong feelings that, that we need to make sure that our signs are there for a reason and that there's substantial documentation to, to follow that. In the MUTCD, it very clearly states that traffic control devices, advertisements announcing other signs within the highway right of way shall be placed only as authorized by a public authority or official having jurisdiction. Even in cases of private roads, the owner should designate that that sign is to take place or to be put in place for the purpose of regulating, warning, or guiding traffic. Also, to substantiate that further, all regulatory traffic control devices shall be supported by laws, ordinances, or regulations. What that means is somewheres along the line, someone takes official action. It might be just a notice in the minutes. It might be something as formal as a resolution. It might be something as serious as going through state statutes to create a law. By doing that, I, I take very seriously that we only address things that, that we have the capability of doing or follow the proper procedure to, to address that. So I'll open it up to questions. I'm sure you got questions. But I just thought I'd give you a little background of why we do what we do. I always like to say that in most cases, there's a method to my madness. It just takes a little bit for me to explain to you why I do what I do. But anyway, the other issue that I brought to people's attention during the discussion of this intersection was that we're currently paying CDI $113,000 to design a road project that will be second to none. It's, it's a very well-done road. Part of that includes signage. I would like to share with you, my opinion is. I would like to share with you, my opinion is that whatever he comes up with as a design and placement of signs, we would adopt that. We would accept his thought process. And one of the things that I am almost assured of that you're going to see is that on four-seventy-fifth Avenue and two-thirteenth, four-seventy-fifth will be the people that will stop. And, and, and probably, I don't want to speak for Kerry, but probably what he'll use for his justification for that decision is that a highway should always have the through traffic or the other traffic should be controlled that might be crossing or joining in that traffic. So I think what he'll say is, according to what his experience has been, this would be your best designation. So therefore, what I would like from the board this morning is to give a agreement or consensus that you would like to direct me to put up the signs either on four-seventy-fifth or back on two-thirteenth as they were. But we'll install them, you know, in the manner that they should be installed and in the location that they should be. And I think that should solve it. I, I think if we get one or the other direction, I certainly do not think it, it merits an always-stop. And I don't think as the road evolves into a much different application and use, I don't think we should have two-hundred-and-thirteenth Street stop. But more or less that four-seventy-fifth would be the controlled and, and, and traffic that would yield to that.
Okay, I've been instructed before to stick with the timing of the public hearings. But stay there because they're not here to testify anyway, so keep your seat, don't give it up. So I am going to open a public hearing for the transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license and on, and on a retail on-sale liquor license from companies at ABR Incorporated and Norgard and Norgard LLC. Do we have any comments, Marty or any, Vicki, Stacy? Okay, and from the commission, otherwise we can take action at this time.
You need to open the public and ask for proponents.
Oh, proponents, okay. Well, I'm just getting a little lax here with the attendance here. Proponents? Opponents? Okay. Yeah, we'll close it, we'll go into, thank you, Stephanie. And we'll go into accepting a, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Moving seconded, Miller and Krogman to transfer the license. Any discussion or questions? Now, Marty, do you have?
I have no problem.
Okay. Hearing done, we're going to do the roll call on these, Jenna, in this section. So please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, we're one minute away from the second one. Yeah, open up public hearing and second reading of the ordinance twenty-fifteen dash zero-one. An ordinance establishing the requirements, fees, regulations for the issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses within Brookings County. Proponents? That'd be you, Leanne, and I, huh, and the staff?
I just, I don't think I have anything to add to what we've already talked about. Hopefully, we've got a good ordinance and we've dealt with the issues. I do know that we have a, a matter coming in front of us. I had a concern that our special event license only applies to charitable and so forth type of, of occasions. And I think that complies with state statute and Miss Howard probably has something to say about that. There wasn't, there is going to be an issue that's going to come up about weddings, I think. So, but we will come back and address that later if we need to.
Any other proponents? Opponents? Close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Don't move.
Pearson, Jensen, discussion and question on the ordinance. Okay, thank you, Leanne and Abby, I'll sneak that in for their work on this ordinance. The roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I want to thank Stacy for pointing out that, I love voice votes, but ordinances require a roll call. Thanks for, because we don't need any problems down the road for future commissions on our ordinances. So, okay, we don't have another one until nine-thirty, so you're, Dick kind of threw out some. For the commission, would you like to comment on them?
Just before we start our discussion, Dick, could you say those SDCL sites one more time? I didn't write them down and I'd like to.
Oh, it's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Right, and you quoted, oh, thirty-one.
Yeah, he did. Oh, yeah, thirty-one, twenty-eight, seventeen. And that gives you, the Department of Transportation or county commissioners may designate any hazardous intersection and designate any railroad crossing as a stop-crossing. Such intersections and railroad crossings shall be designated by placing a stop sign and a warning to the stop. And then that's just telling you that, that, that's why I'm here asking you that maybe we should designate this as a dangerous. And then the other one is, is kind of my thinking was thirty-one, twenty-eight, nineteen. And that states that no person shall place, maintain, or display upon or in view of any highway any unauthorized sign, signal, marking, or device which purports to be or is an imitation of or resembles an official traffic control device. And by that, I was just saying that we, we don't want to get in the habit of just putting something out there to, to temporarily, you know, address an issue. We really need, if nothing else, maybe, may, I should make a phone call to all the commissioners and, and get a consensus over the phone or something like that. But anyway, those are just the two that, that I followed up on, not to mention, you know, this, this manual here is, is very important to follow, so.
Thank you.
Have you, have you talked to, to CDI about what their thoughts on signage, you have?
Right, and, and also those plans are already at the DOT getting approved, so.
So you already know what that looks like?
Right.
Okay, okay.
So that's why I would recommend that you would go with that and, and agree with what CDI has come up with.
Does CDI make their recommendation based on that manual, too?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
I think at ten o'clock we'll find out, staff, I think, and I've had so many phone calls with those guys that, that the DOT has approved the plan, but they'll be here on at ten, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, sorry, just a quick question. I just question if this is something, once we do have the final placement that's recommended and everyone agrees upon, it should be approved via ordinance. I don't see that it's required by statute, but the last time we put up stop signs, we did it by an ordinance. And basically, you're, you're creating a new law that if they don't stop at the stop sign, you're violating the law. And that's the purpose of an ordinance. So I'm certainly not trying to make more work, but if we're following past practice, the proper step would be once we're going to place it, we do it via ordinance. And I would also just note, I visited with Rick Eggerbrecht yesterday from Novita and he was in agreement that four-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, from their perspective, would be the appropriate placement.
In reading through the statute thirty-one, twenty-eight, seventeen, I believe that gives Dick authority to establish a stop intersection. And I don't know if the sign program went through when all those townships and the county signed those agreements. Did that automatically designate every stop sign that was put up be legal? Because we'd have five, six hundred resolutions here.
Right, according to what they did when they did that program is they hired an engineering firm, in, in our case, it was Banner. They went out and they took an inventory of every sign that's in existence. Then they took the Manual of Uniform Control Devices and put together what should be there. And that's why you've seen a lot of controversy as far as townships, even us as counties. Some of the biggest concerns were, for example, people wanted a school bus stop ahead sign. Makes sense, kids are stopping, getting picked up. If, if that stop is visible from a given distance, according to this manual, then the sign is not needed. Well, the people came unglued because we've always had one and my kids, I worry about them, blah, blah, blah. Another situation you've heard, I'm sure you got calls on, was the minimum maintenance roads. The townships, very clearly, they can't afford to take care of all those. So to designate them officially as minimum maintenance roads, they found out that they weren't enforceable or they weren't doing what they were supposed to do without official action. Well, when they took official action, that had ramifications because the person won't deliver the mail. The, the school bus can't go down the minimum maintenance road. It, it's all tied together and, and we're, we're in a learning curve here that, that shows what should be and what has been are maybe not the same. Also, Stephanie shared with me some of those proposed things for that highway plan that we have to have. One of the items they list in there is you must maintain a current inventory of official highway signs. And that, we're already way ahead of everybody because ours is completely done and, and, and current, plus our signs are all current. It's more and more one of those things that it's not whether it's, what was done prior is right, wrong. That's not to be said, it's, it's the rules we play by now. And I think that's important that we follow up and the statel by their suggestions in our plan. We have to have quite a few items that will be addressed, so that's.
I mean, issues arise with construction projects, temporary stop signs are put up, they're put up for safety reasons. Same way out in the townships. As the year goes on, the corn gets taller, okay, some of the township supervisors, they'll go out and put up a stop sign for the rest of the season. I mean, it's, it's there for a safety measure. Just to help out till the, till the hazard is gone, same way within a construction zone. It's more of a safety deal than a legal matter. And I just feel that if there's a hazardous situation, we should be able to put a stop sign to control that intersection. If need be, we need to do a resolution. But if there's a hazardous situation out there, I believe we need to get a stop sign.
One thing too, Larry, that you bring up a good point. We get numerous calls, go fix a sign on the interstate. The stop signs knocked down on a township road, we've got a sign down which we address all of them instantly, as quickly as possible, just so you were aware of it as a board. But sometimes we'll find out that that's not in our jurisdictional control. And so probably the most prudent thing we can do is contact the right people to make sure that they're aware of it. And a lot of times, if it's just something that one got knocked over, whatever, we stand it up the best we can and, and go about our business. But it is, you're absolutely right, safety is a, a priority for us. But yet sometimes you have to, we, we can't do it all. We, we've got to try to take care of everything the best we can within our limitations and, and go on. You can't, I guess I, I don't like to feel that everybody's, you know, relying on just hearsay or, or what personal gut feelings I have are the reason things take place within the county. I, I like to feel like I'm trying to do the best I can with the guidelines given and hopefully it's acceptable to the public, so.
Good question, yeah. Just a quick question, when you talked about that manual, it said with sufficient data and that type of thing, what are we talking about for data that you would, if an intersection came up and we had somebody say, hey, I want stop signs here because they're going too fast or slow people, they know stuff. And then, you know, on our South Main, we had our sheriff and the city police, they did studies and they watched it and that kind of stuff. Is that sufficient data or a car counter for the number of cars that are going through? What, what is your sufficient data?
Yeah, all that adds up to sufficient data. Probably the, the biggest one, the road design speed. You've heard that talk on the different projects we're doing this year, that they're going to keep them at like a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. That brings us set a criteria that Banner followed. This is what we're allowed and not allowed at a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. Kerry did the same, so engineering comes into play. Before we would go that far as to get an engineer, I can go out and measure because they use the secondary roads manual, like I showed you yesterday, Stephanie, that the state DOT uses for their designs. And I can look up in there and if it says there's a visibility, visibility of only two-hundred-and-fifty feet before this intersection and the speed limit's fifty-five, I can pretty much in my amateur capacity say, that's pretty limited, we better, we better make you stop or yield or something, you know. And you look at traffic counts to see which should be the through street, which should be that, so.
So if we have to, obviously, we have to do an ordinance which will require publishing to put the stop signs on four-hundred-and-seventy-fifth as opposed to two-thirteenth. So for the temporary, what, what do you suggest we do? Leave the temporary signs there or just take them down and?
No, I, I'd take the temporary ones down. I would contact Kerry and get the positioning of the new signs because once construction starts, those will be removed and they'll be in the way anyway. So for the time being, we'll get them as close to exact as where they should be so people get used to that. Maybe put a flag on it to draw their attention. But again, they won't be enforceable.
Until the ordinance is done.
Yeah, Leanne.
Abby, did you find something in the code that says we need an ordinance? Because I'm not seeing it, but I'm just looking through as we're sitting here.
No, there's nothing that I found that requires the ordinance. And I guess, you know, I'm open to what the board is wanting, but it does appear that certainly authorization is what is required. And from my perspective, if someone were to challenge why a stop sign was placed there, if they are charged with a stop sign violation, if we can have some sort of documentation to back up why it was placed there, I guess that helps us. And if Dick, if Dick does something internally that verifies that, that's fine. Or if you feel that a resolution is more appropriate, I guess I just liken it to a speed limit, placing a speed limit up. And those we do by ordinance, but that is required by state law.
Well, I see that we've got three issues, what we're doing at two-hundred-and-thirteenth in this intersection and then what we're going to do in the future and whether we need to do something to fix the past, okay? And Stacy, you've been putting ordinances on the website. Have you seen, other than the one ordinance that Abby's talking about, have you seen any ordinances on stop signs?
No.
Okay, so it doesn't look like that's what we've done in the past.
See, I was just thinking the ordinance, my short time and stop sign law, which is Main Avenue. And we did an ordinance there and I assumed it was because we had another government agency. We, and then we had the Aurora discussion and we were talking about an ordinance there, which we didn't end up doing. But that's in a county road in a city limit, so.
And it's a speed limit.
So was it, there was. So was it, there was a stop sign, uh we didn't give it to them. Didn't we Marty?
Oh, okay, the one that was on by the convenience.
So that was an ordinance discussion, but I thought that, I mean, I don't know, is that because, yeah, we're dealing with another.
We have documentation, we will have documentation telling us why the stop signs need to be placed where they're going to be placed. And that's the engineering report from CDI.
So and that deals with with this particular.
Right.
But we have, how many stop signs throughout the county? If we have an inventory.
We have sixty-nine hundred signs, but I don't know how many stop.
So based on some of our planning and zoning issues, it occurs to me that maybe we wanna take a look at that inventory, since you're putting it together, and maybe if we can do this by resolution and Abby could maybe tell us that at the next meeting, maybe once we look at that inventory as part of our road and bridge project stuff that we're doing, we could do a resolution approving all of those stop signs that are in there, so we have something in writing. Does that make sense to everybody?
Well, it's possible. I mean, it'd be nice to have some kind of simple rule guideline. If you got a county road, it gets stop signs. But but if you, that's a lot of stop signs out there. And I don't know how many have been put up by the local township. Uh we got one east of us, Stacy. I don't know if the county commission even knows it's, or the county. Yeah, it's a township road, if we even know there's, it's needs to be there too. I mean, uh I mean, are we gonna cover every stop sign? I mean, I, we may have something out there that we don't know about. I uh I don't know the answer, but I just.
I'm just thinking, you know the answer to these questions.
I, but I think that's, I think that's overkill. I just, I don't think, I don't think how we've always operated is necessarily bad. And I I think that's overkill and I think that we can continue on and and let our highway superintendent take care of the business he's supposed to be taking care of.
Are you saying that that Dick would make the decision on stop signs? Or you're saying that the commission would, which is what the statute says?
No, it says an authority, doesn't it?
Yeah, and I believe that's, I I got an opinion from LTAP, who I got an opinion from, and it's road authority or commission.
Either one.
And that's, I mean. I mean, Dick, Dick goes out and looks at an intersection and he believes it's uh warrants a stop sign. If he writes down his reasons why he warrants it a stop sign, a simple note, I mean, that's that's your background information, in my opinion.
I guess my ignorance of the law is when I see a stop sign, I stop. And I figure if I roll through it, which I've been known to do in the middle of nowhere, but if I roll through it and somebody catches me, I pay the fine, but maybe we don't need a Philadelphia lawyer or Sharp Brookings lawyer to say, well, you don't have an ordinance, so you don't. But I can't believe that's not, that's the case, I mean.
I don't know that it's not the case. What I'm saying is we should find out.
Yeah, let's find that one out.
But we've got our road authority, he is our road authority.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna find out, but let's, let's maybe move on, we'll see how we're doing here, okay. Uh onto the current situation, what what do you wanna do at that intersection? I will begin by saying that uh I have a good friend whose family was affected, death and a serious injury over a stolen stop sign. So stop signs being absent uh can cause a serious injury. Now, we got one out there.
Well, he just said what we were gonna do.
Yeah, so.
The comment on this intersection, we can't take stop signs down and not do nothing.
Yes.
So we created a dangerous, had a dangerous intersection with stop signs. The stop signs disappear and it became uncontrolled intersection. And so something needed to go back up until you guys decide where to put those.
Or under what authority?
Yes. I think that's the point we're missing is we can't take something down without doing something else.
Who took it down?
You tell me.
That's what I'm saying, I I would expect that a person, if there's no recollection and you search for that a sign is supposed to exist and you find nothing, then I think it's prudent to follow proper procedure and let's put something back up, but make sure that it is done in the proper way, that it it holds merit.
Well, I agree, but you gotta do something in between. So I'm determining that case as stolen signs. They've been there for forty years.
Right.
I can track them back to forty years, so you don't, but you just can't leave them, no intersection, uncontrolled then. And not have nothing there, because you got a blind intersection.
Let's, is the commission agree, if there's a stop sign down, properly authority or whatever, we should probably replace it. Yeah, and then sort it out later. Okay, to the next point, we're gonna have, we got some temporaries out there, where do you want the temporaries? Do you want them on four hundred and seventy-fifth? We got a dangerous intersection, so somebody.
I'll make the motion to install new stop signs at uh on four seventy-fifth, stopping from the north and south.
Can't take action Larry, because we have to have that on the agenda stuff. But we can direct, just like we did on our Main Avenue thing, to work it out till we made an ordinance. But first of all, we gotta find out where the authorities stop, we gotta find stop sign law. And but in the meantime, we need to, we need to do something. And I'll take Dick and Marty and the commissioner's advice, um you know, as you want to stop four hundred and seventy-fifth or you wanna stop two hundred and thirteenth, which the way it was for forty years, but gone three weeks without, or, so what's your thoughts?
Well, I think we just as well get amused to stopping at four seventy-fifth, if that's what we're going to be doing. So the signs, uh it's, this is gonna be a confusing problem, I'm afraid.
Unfortunately, we're probably about a year and a half late on this deal.
Yeah.
The county took over that road, what, two thousand thirteen, fall or wherever, at that time, the proper sign, it should have been installed. We can't look at that, I believe we should move forward and and Dick's recommendation was to start on four seventy-five and go with Dick's recommendation.
Okay, Leanne, Ryan, yeah, I agree uh that we go on four hundred and seventy-fifth. Do our professionals uh agree with that? Safety, I'm I'm primarily concerned about safety, but we've been going three weeks now with them down. Will that provide the safety in this instance, because of the the grove of trees or whatever, um four seventy-fifth your inclination? Okay. Yeah, well, we're gonna do that, well, there's something out there now. And and I guess Dick, the consensus is here, uh to move the temporary, like you said, and find the approximate location of where they'll be. Leanne, we had three things, find out the law, where's the signs, what was your third one?
Pardon me?
You came up with three things that we need.
It's it's looking at what we're gonna do on two hundred and seventeen, then that that we've just decided on. And looking at what we've done in the past and then making sure we've got a procedure for the future, so we all are operating.
And that'd be part of the research of the resolution ordinance, et cetera, rail, rail authority, excuse me, uh road authority.
To that point and to Larry's point here, when we took that over, that that part of the road, is one of our procedures now that if there is a stop sign on there, because if that was a township road, there may not be any documentation of why it was up or who put it up. So is that something that we need to do in the future, that any county roads that we take over, that we should, whether we do an ordinance, a resolution, whatever, or do we just say the stop sign's been there, we're gonna keep it there?
Whenever you alter, change, accept, whatever, any section of road you accepted in whole. You accept the bridges, you accept the signs, you accept everything. However, in Larry's accurate, if you find out when you accepted that, that something isn't right, you should change it.
So in the future, one of our due diligence is if we do accept the road, we should do some research of of all of the signage, approaches, whatever the, whatever it's designed or done, we need to get that up to to standards, so.
Right, sure. Dick, do you have a recommendation for a road number?
Well, we've on our time cards just used Eighth Street East. What would have been nice is to keep it at like two thirteen or something like that, but it was kinda confusing because we don't call other roads by a street, a nine-one-one designation. So that would be, I don't care what we call it, but.
The address of the person living on?
That is a separate, they've got their own number.
Right, but then will the street change, will it be county road?
Theoretically it could, I suppose, but I'd have to ask Madden's or Maddox what what their address is and.
Okay, it's nine thirty, we can continue. Do you have other report other than your show for the?
No, the the rest I've got with me for that.
For that part.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, if you wanna come back to it, but it is nine thirty. And uh public hearing and second reading of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero two, an ordinance establishing a forty-five mile an hour per hour speed limit upon a portion of County Road twenty-three. Is that going in the audience, proponent, opponent? Hear any, um I'll close the public hearing and take a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second, any more question or discussion on this?
Have we decided how far out? Because I think last time we had talked about we wanted a half mile out or a quarter of a mile or a certain area, but then.
Dick said it had to be three quarters.
Dick said it had to be a certain there, so have we decided that it is three quarters, that's per the regulations, is that correct?
Uh uh, good question.
We went to the restroom.
Well, where is, when the mayor left, how far out were we?
I thought we were a half.
Well, we did discuss.
I think Dick's explanation was.
Right, that's right. That's right. I asked the question last week because we thought a half a mile was enough and that's what his explanation was.
But it says three quarters of a mile.
Commissioners Jensen, Miller and myself drove that yesterday and I think we thought that the three quarters was okay.
Would work, yeah.
Based on where it was, where we were at.
Okay, so it's three quarters.
You thought that was.
Well, based on it were. Dick, can you clarify where the speed limit would lower? Is that, would that be just north of Lyferman's Trees or south of their farm out there? On on twenty-three south of Aurora, sorry.
So I guess that would be my question is, why do we have to do it to the north side when there's a bean plant there and there's not one on the south side? I mean, why do we have to stay consistent, or a corn plant, excuse me, ethanol plant? Um why do we need to stay consistent because of that? Definitely, you know, and that to slow them down, so because they'll be turning, they have turning lanes and different stuff like that, there's gonna be more congestion there, I just don't see that congestion on the south side that they're warrant that we'd have to go that far out, I guess. And I just didn't know if there's a way, I know it's conformity type of thing, I don't know if it's in the manual, that that's what we need to do, that if somebody does get caught speeding, that because it's not, doesn't conform, that it's not right, I guess. And I mean, I don't know if that could be the case at all, that to be able to enforce a speeding ticket, if somebody decided that, that it wasn't the same as the north and it's not considered the book, or do we have the ability to say at a half mile is is adequate, um as a recommendation from you or from anybody? I just don't, what I don't like is, okay, this is the set stuff, and I understand liability of the stuff too, but it's also like Corps of Engineers followed a manual flooded pier. Where was the common sense involved in this stuff? So I mean, if we're following a manual here, where's where's the common sense here of sending a uh a speed limit out too far or quite a ways out and making people slow down way too early where the common sense, my gut tells me a half mile's gonna get them slowed down, it's gonna get their ability to get down to twenty-five. Why put undue burden on people coming in because the manual says so? And that's just my my concern about, you know, that some of that stuff that, okay, they put these manuals over the whole thing, but there's different situations, there's curves coming into town, there's different, there's gravel roads coming into town and not paved roads, I mean, you can't just put that overlay thing on everybody. And I just didn't know if there was the ability to have that discussion where, you know, common sense says a half mile's just fine. But I also don't, you know, Abby brings up a point there, is that then all of a sudden unenforceable because it wasn't followed and somebody can take you to task, um that says you didn't follow this and so now that speed limit is is void. I don't know, I would hate to have that happen, but I I know that's the world we live in too.
My own personal experience, I know it's two types of entries, one that gives you a warning. They say forty-five miles ahead, and I like those, I let up on the gas and if they're perfectly timed, I'm pretty dang close by the time I get to it. And then there's the ones that you just come up and they say one, well, in Bogah, and this is state highway, so uh it says fifty. And it says fifty right at the intersection of the soybean plant, in a little bit it says thirty-five. Well, in two and a half milliseconds, when I see that thirty-five, I'm not hitting thirty-five and nobody else is either. So a lot of times those speed limit signs, Ryan, actually serve as a form of warning to start, because there it is, oh geez, forty-five, they let up on the gas. And by the time they get to where we want them slowed down, they have slowed down. But still technically they're violating the law, but uh, so I'm a big advocate of the signs that warn you one's coming and then you put it where you want it, but. Thanks, I, I thought it was my hearing that I wasn't hearing, okay. Uh, it was really straining to hear. Well, I guess the question is, um, well, we're not arguing whether it's an ordinance or not. We're arguing, we're not arguing, we're discussing where this sign should go.
I don't need to drag it on. If, if, if three quarters of a mile is the best or anything like that, I just, um, you know, I just don't, I think it's overkill. I don't think it needs to be that long. I think you put undue stress on people coming in, going forty-five for a half a mile when there, there's no, there's no really need for that. But I'm not gonna turn around and, you know, be upset because it's at that, I guess. I just, I wish there was the ability to throw a little, maybe, and maybe it's not common sense. I guess my common sense says we have enough room there at half a mile, but again, it's not a big deal. Um, I would vote for it same way anyway.
We, Mr. Chair, we did discuss this and like Commissioner Pierce said, um, we looked at it yesterday when we came back from, from Flanders, from our meeting there. And we, we talked about it at that time and actually that it's not as severe as it appears.
Okay. Appreciate you looking at it. I guess I was gonna ask our deputy state's attorney, being unfamiliar, how, how far can you go with amending a public hearing, something that you've, you've discussed? And if you go too far, do you have to start all over again? Or if you just change it a little bit? This is for future reference because I think we're gonna go with your recommendation, but any future, it just seems like if you changed it substantially, it seems like you should almost have another public hearing. I mean, I don't know what the law, I just.
Well, we opened it up to the public for their positive and that kind of stuff and we can take that consideration and.
I just didn't know how far you could go before you.
I think you would have the discretion to amend. That's the purpose of the discussion and you've had the public hearing. Uh, if you were gonna substantially alter the entire purpose of the ordinance and the entire body of it, I might question whether or not it was ready for final approval.
Yeah.
But a minute change should be fine.
I, I was just thinking like the previous ordinance, for example, uh, you would have people that didn't come because they saw it in print and it was just fine. And then we change it, we add fees, we do this and that. Um, I just, I figured there has to be some guideline of substantiability, but it's not a point here, uh, because I see three that are gonna live with the point seven-five and if not, we can always change it, right? That's within our authority. So we've had the discussions. Is there any more discussion on the motion? I believe we still had one a little while back, yeah. Hearing more, not any more discussion, uh, please call the rules.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Kogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um, now we got time here before our ten o'clock and, uh, that's just a discussion and possible action. So Marty.
The last two weeks, the jail's been, uh, extremely, extremely busy. Uh, had to bring in extra staff to help out, uh, city police and my office been making some drug arrests and so forth. I think the, we have thirty-seven inmates and I think the majority of them are felony inmates, uh, uh, that we're holding and, uh, uh, one of the things is that we also deal with in between and, and Abby doesn't have to get involved in those, is the chemical dependency holds. And I just want to quickly explain to the commission how they work. Is that if a family member has a, has a, uh, a individual or another family member that they feel has a, a chemical dependency, if it's alcohol or drugs, they can go to the clerk of courts and fill out paperwork and, uh, um, it, uh, a court-appointed attorney can be assigned to that person and, uh, or to that family. And it goes up before, uh, the judge and the judge will sign for my office to pick this person up. So we go pick that person up and put him in my facility. And then, uh, that, uh, that attorney then tries to find a bed for that person, which there's no beds in South Dakota right now. Uh, they're all full. So then that person stays in my facility up to probably two weeks. But this person that's, uh, uh, being on protective custody has a right to apply for a court-appointed attorney. And that's just what happened this last week is that, um, that person doesn't believe that she has, had a, had a problem, so then she, or that this inmate applied for a court-appointed attorney who on that side does the evaluation. So the family has an attorney, which is paid by the county to do evaluation. And then she has a right to get a court-appointed attorney to do evaluation. And then the two evaluations go before the court and then the judge decides if this person should go to a facility. And what happened last week is that we have two attorneys, two evaluations, and the judge decided that, uh, it didn't warrant her to go to, to treatment, so then the person is, is released. And then the very next day Abby gets involved because now the family wants to commit him to Yankton. And which, uh, Abby had to, had to come in and, and, and work with that with the city police and then the doctor decided that it wasn't committable. But just, just to tell you a little bit about what's going on, in the meantime, I'm holding this person, you know, for, for over seven days in my facility, you know, which to me they shouldn't be in my facility, but I'm under a court order. I can't not hold them. To me, they should be into a, a medical facility for observation because, you know, a person that does have a chemical dependency, if it's alcohol or whatever, is, 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 uh, you know, their blood pressure should be checked and they should be monitored and there's a lot of things that entail this. So it puts a lot of exposure on, on the county to make sure that this person is safe away in my facility. And besides, I'm overwhelmed already by, by, um, other inmates. You know, this person is high maintenance, you know, just, just to kind of fill you in is that I still always say that the jail is the best kept secret in this town because nobody really knows what goes on in there unless you live it and you work in there and so forth. So I'm just trying to explain those types of things that we deal with. Um, and, uh, another reason I have to, this particular chemical dependency was a female, so I have to put them in my female cell, which is also, I have misdemeanors and felonies in that cell. You know, it's not the place to put them. I don't, that's why someday I hope we can have a, a separate place for someone like this and a chemical dependency, but that's, that's in our strategic plan for future plans. So just to kind of explain what my staff has to go through and what we do. And it puts exposure, my staff does a good job, you know, with this, but, uh, you know, just because the family thinks that they, they need to be committed doesn't mean that that's, that's, that's what happens. But in the meantime, I'm ordered to keep them in, in, in the house. And, and this particular time too, is that we had another one in there that we had for two weeks, but they didn't fight the, um, knew that they had a problem, didn't fight it, it was just that we didn't have a bed. And so there was, we had to wait two weeks. So I held this person for two weeks before we were, was able to transport to a facility. Just something to, to, to let you guys be aware of. Um, other than that, unless you have some questions, yes?
I always have a question. How are, how are you handling the medical withdrawal issues then if somebody's being kept for that long over at the detention?
Our nurse handles that and if it's necessary, we transport to the, to the hospital, which the first one we had, we did have to call an ambulance and transport up to the hospital to get, get some things taken care of and then they'll authorize to come back to jail. A lot of times I want our, our nurse to be involved or the doctor to be involved and, and give us something in writing to say that the person's okay to come back to jail. So, otherwise it's just watching them. That's why I bring in next, when I have these instances, that's why I have to bring in a third correctional officer, because basically we have to either sit in front of the camera and watch that or make sure that that person, something else doesn't happen to that person. So that's why I get, have to bring in an, an extra staff.
So why there at the hospital, are you providing, is, is one of your staff with them the whole time they're there?
Yes, yes. Yep. And I, you know, and I have to do it. I, I mean, it's just part of it. And the police chief would, would stand right here and be on the same bandwagon as that for thirty years, we've tried to get some type of detox bed or whatever at the hospital and, and, and it's just, it, it's tough to do that because it's, you know, it's, uh, um, you have to have a, a guard or employee, I mean, it's, they're high maintenance there also. So, you know, who else is gonna do it? You know, so then it falls back, back on the, on, on the detention center. It's just that years ago in Rapid City, they had the same problem, didn't have a detox, you know, and that sheriff took over the detox and now they got a, the, the county runs the detox. And I'm not saying that we want to have a detox because that's, but you have to put these people somewhere and the only place you put them right now is in my facility.
Well, maybe one of the things that we're considering contributing a significant amount of money to the hospital expansion, maybe we should be asking some questions about our need, which would be a detox room.
And I agree. And it, we need to start that, uh, get all the stakeholders and, and, and try to communicate with this. Um, two or three administrators back agreed that we needed something and talked about a, a, a safe bed in, in, in the nursing home that was behind it within some space and stuff, but, uh, you know, that never come through, you know. So the different administrators have different ideas, but it's, it's tough to try to convince them because it's, uh, you know, because they don't want to deal with this person up there really either, you know. And if they do have someone that's up there on a, on a, on a hold, uh, a mental, a med, uh, if it's a committal or whatever, then they want a guard, you know, so.
That was my next question. If we had a detox center somewhere else, you'd still have to have somebody there the whole time anyway, wouldn't you?
Absolutely. You know, so that, that's one of the things is, you know, who's gonna pay for, you know, is the county, it's gonna be the county responsibility for the guard or, or whatever, you know. So and right now it'd probably, it'd probably be us, you know, that would probably be doing the guard duty.
Is that something, because the hospital issue I think is gonna come up pretty quick, is that something we should have, I hate the word subcommittee, or somebody looking at that the sheriff's involved in making a proposal so that we're not behind the eight ball on that?
Something to discuss.
Well, I guess it's definitely worth looking at. You know, this is, uh, not good business, but bad business and any business decisions based upon lease, rent or own and based upon the amount of use. If you just use it once in a while, you're maybe better off just renting it and going through the expense. And if we use a lot, well, you might be cheaper to own, um, whether it's the hospital or to the new detention center. And I guess some kind of a analysis of costs, having our own or hospital one or versus just doing what we're doing, sending them out there and sending a deputy out there, obviously be done.
I guess what concerns me, I guess, is maybe the liability of the fact that, okay, if this person you're, you're holding and then they pass away in, in the cell for, and then come back and we get sued for not having medical staff or the ability to, to do that, is, is that what you're kind of concerned?
And that's where I'm at. We just put exposure because there's state law on a, on a detox facility and they're talking, you know, blood pressure's taking every half hour and all kinds of recommendations or laws that, that pertain to detox centers, you know. And like I say, we do the best we can at, at the detention center. I just want to note that, that the police chief and myself have never approached the present administrator on, on this subject, uh, at all. We just, uh, it's been previous administrators, but, uh, uh, we've, we've had some discussion about commit, commitments up there. On, on the biggest thing is on, on, on their staff. It puts pressure on their staff too when they have these individuals up there. And they worry about safety, you know, the safety of, of other, um, patients and the safety of, of, of their personnel also. So that's why, you know, it's, to me, there's gotta, we should have a separate, some type of separate safe room up there that could hold something like that. That's this, my.
What's, so what's the best case scenario? What would you see as the best case scenario? If the, the, the health system was willing to work with you on it, what would be the best case scenario? What would be your wish list?
Well, I guess my, if the hospital was willing to do that, I guess I wouldn't mind furnishing, to me, it's still in the long run, it'd be some wages, but you know, if we have to furnish the guard, you know, the, the thing is if, if the patient is, is, is passive, you know, a lot of times it, it's gonna be okay. But sometimes you have a passive, passive patient that as they withdraw or whatever become agitated. So that's, that's some of the unknowns. But still, I think in the long run, these people need to be in a medical facility. And so if the county has to pick up a tab for wages, it's still a long, it's still better than what you're talking about if someone, a family member dies in our custody because we didn't provide adequate medical care for this person. Because a lot of times we don't know what they're withdrawing from either until we get our evaluator in there or the, you know, chemical dependency evaluator to come in and try to determine, you know, what this person has because we've not taken any tests, you know. In the medical facility, you're gonna be taking tests to see what's in the person's body.
What would be the determination? Whether would you or be a city police? Is it where the person resides?
And that's, uh, it's probably, that's gonna be a good question. Right now, we struggle with that now with our medical commitments is that the city police say they're understaffed and that they don't have time to, to guard. A lot of times I only have one person available. I don't have, I, so, so we have to call in a person, you know, home to go in. Normally, what we try to do is if the city police initiate a contact with a person that might do a committal, right now they're going up and, 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 and standing by until Abby does the paperwork and we got an order of transport, then, then my office becomes involved at, at that point.
So I, I'm not sure that I heard you answer Ryan's question. If you could have whatever you wanted, what would it be?
In which, as far as?
What, what option? What, what do you think would resolve this problem from your perspective?
Well, if the hospital would provide a safe room, or I, I call it a safe room, you know, I think the county, I would be willing to provide the guard if that was necessary. Because I think in the long term and looking for exposure, I think we'd rather pay a few hundred dollars on overtime than millions of dollars if we didn't have adequate medical for, for this person.
When you call a safe room, is that a, a room that is built differently, that the doors are locked and it's more of a?
Correct.
More similar to a jail cell?
There's nothing in there that can be thrown around and there's no TVs and there's just nothing in there.
Is it similar to a jail cell that they can't get out also?
Right.
Only have to get a combination to get in?
Yep. But there's some regulations, because they do have a room up there now, not to bring up a lot of things, and Abby has been in a, in a lot of these conversations. They do have a room now, but the, uh, a lock on it has to be physically held down by someone. It's not locked on its own. In other words, an employee has to keep their hand on a lock. And, um, we have some, and I, I don't quite understand their regulations, but I guess that's the way they have to do it. Abby, I don't know if you have a comment?
Well, I would just add, I think it's Barb Anderson, is it, that runs a foundation or does that aspect? She's approached me and just mentioned that throughout this expansion process, they are gonna be looking at some of the mental health needs. So I don't know if she would be the place to start. Um, so she certainly hasn't, I haven't had this conversation with her, but, um, she had just mentioned they might be looking at that, so maybe they would be open. But I am in a hundred percent agreement with the sheriff and it's something he and the chief and I have had ongoing discussions on for years now and to no avail.
And I guess, one of the things I guess I could do is as a board member on that, we have a May twenty-eighth meeting, uh, that I could certainly bring it up to the health system board, our concerns and as long as we're going through this expansion and some of the things like that, I could bring that up too, to get that conversation on, on the Brookings Health System Board too. So, I don't know, do you need to sit down with, uh, uh, Jason Merkley on it and that kind of thing, or is it just bringing it up and starting the conversation, or do we want to sit down directly and, and have that conversation sooner than later?
Yeah.
I guess in my presentation from Barb, we talked about, um, as we move into the new facility, what they were gonna do with the older part and she indicated to me they're looking at a mental health, uh, but portion of that, uh, building. So that's, I mean, it's a step in the right direction and.
So this is probably a good time to start that dialogue then.
I think Commissioner Krogman's onto something, you know, Barb, uh, she's the fundraiser. Jason's determines what they're gonna spend and Jason determines based upon the board. So I would recommend that Ryan, if you could carry the ball there. In the meantime though, I think we need to get straight on the city's participation. though, I think we need to get straight on the city's participation or not participation concerning providing staff. And if we're on our own, we're on our own. I don't know what the laws are or responsibilities.
Of course, some of the concerns would be as how long you have to provide a guard. You know, if we're talking two weeks waiting for a bed, it does at some point get costly too for wages to, you know, so it's...
Marty, you're the only holding facility correctly, correct?
Correct.
Is there at times that the city police watch over a prisoner in your facility?
No.
No.
Once they hit the door and we take them, they're ours.
Yeah. See, that's why, but if you could visit with Jeff, Chief, and then, and maybe both Jeffs as far as that goes, because Jeff Walden, and just see what they're involved. But I think we'll wait to hear what Ryan has to say and I think we'll proceed with that.
And I'm thinking the city's being asked for money for the expansion also. So this is a good time.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think we need to tread softly here because this is in no way any guarantee that we will be handing over a million dollars to them. So just had to add those two cents.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, thank you, Marty.
Thanks.
Excuse me. 10 o'clock, we have Rick and Keith from Novita. Kerry Brech couldn't not be here, but he was going to send somebody. Pardon? Yes. We'll start, you guys get up here and tell us about how your project's going and what you know. I'm going to text Kerry and...
Thank you for having us. Semi beautiful day out today. I'll give you a brief update on the project. We're on schedule for our spring 2016 startup. We broke ground on March 23rd. It's a great site. We're very happy with how things are going. Civil work is nearly complete. Temporary construction power and the data lines have been installed and we have construction trailers on site with the appropriate permits, of course. The berm itself is complete and seated. It looks very nice. It's settled about a foot. I talked to Richard from the zoning office yesterday and he was out there and looked at it and thought it looked great. Ida Slocum likes it too, by the way. She's great. The Fagan crews began arriving to the site about April 20th. You'll see a real significant increase in construction workers on the site starting right after July 4th. We began excavating for the foundations on the site on May 11th. And it's really about where we are right now. You'll see a lot more activity going on up there. Any other questions on the project itself?
I think one of the things is rail issues. Where are you at with your rail?
Oh, the rail design or the rail loan?
Well, just, well, the design, I think we, you've got a loop. I think we've seen that. Yeah. So it's just the financing.
Sure. Glad to. Keith, you want to share on that?
Sure. Keith Bronsma, as you may be aware, the rail, we have been approved for a rail authority loan through the county. However, the state rail board has no money available. So we've been working with the governor's office on funding and they've been very helpful. And so they're looking at different options on how to be able to fund the rail board that could then push the money down to the local rail authority. And so right now, we're just in that process of, yeah, trying to get those funds from the governor's office. So that's where we're at today.
Go ahead.
I just, are you moving forward with the loop or the rail going out for bids for construction of the rail?
Right now, no, we're not at that point. It's mainly the inside the battery limits of the plant. Then later this summer, we begin dirt work and based on what kind of, yeah, money we have available for rail infrastructure. Today, our plan is, our model's built off of, yeah, single car manifest. And so that's how we're proceeding today. The business still works with that. Our goal would be to have the unit train capability because that's where the real opportunity is. So...
So a question for you. If, you know, we're talking, I think about four million is the loan for the authority and stuff. If you, for some reason, weren't to get it, okay, if, you know, or you get approved for it, but there just isn't any money from the authority and stuff, would you continue? Would it stop anything? I mean, how would that affect your moving forward?
No. I think the design would change from what we had sent to you that, or that looking at a loop track. However, yeah, we'd have to go with the single car manifest, I believe. And then at some point in the future, as funds became available with the state rail board, that we'd come back and add that infrastructure at a later time. But that wouldn't stop our project, no.
Right. We have an operating plan to move a rail by single cars or 10 or 15 cars at a time, or to move the cars by 80 to 110 cars at a time. The economics for the unit trains and the turn times are better. Whenever you're running a business, you want to do the best you can do.
Okay. We had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about this, the status with the state and the status of your project. And I'm glad you came and brought us up to date. Is there any other questions from the commission? Okay. I guess that's it. I have not heard back from Kerry.
And we'd be glad to come back every, however often you'd like, if it's every month or every other month, and give you an update on the project. We can discuss maybe things that have come up. We're endeavoring to keep people off the road, right? Even people that are just driving a pickup out there, we encourage them. No, we don't encourage them. We tell them to take the Aurora Road and then take 213th to the plant. And there have been some that have swayed from the path and we've corrected them.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Since Kerry's not here or his representative, I've had so many conversations with him. The DOT, do you know what, did he get the plans back for our road? Didn't he ever tell you?
I can't speak to that at all.
Okay. One of the questions we had talked about a little bit is the construction of the road. And front of us is getting ready to advertise for bids. And I see the bids there where the asphalt surfacing and that kind of stuff. Were you guys, correct or wrong, okay that the first process for us would be getting upgraded road to better road and that the first thing in the spring, we would asphalt it?
Yeah. We actually worked with Deputy State's Attorney Howard and drafted an agreement and signed it. So...
So we're good with that, that kind of stuff. So this, that's my, I guess I would have a question with CDI on this bid form. If we're going to keep it together or separate it, but that's not for you guys. So, but I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
And there was some conversation by email with Mr. Burke and I yesterday regarding the stop signs on 213th. Just our perspective on that, you know, we want to make sure that those trucks go from our plant to the Aurora Road. And if that, so we think that the stop signs should be north and south because if those trucks stop, then they have a chance to think, well, if I just go left and I, you know, save me a little time. But if they keep going, they're less inclined to turn. Plus, from a noise standpoint too, the truck's stopping and then having to start again, be better for the neighbors.
And then that speed limit is going to be 45 on that road?
Good. What is it right now?
Yeah.
You're right, 55.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You.
Well, thank you. Yes.
I don't know if we're looking at possible action or whatever. My discussion, I guess, if we can do that before we do the action or whatever, you know, the bid says they're doing bid for all the asphalt, concrete surfacing and...
That's the total project, Ryan. The actual bidding agreement, which we don't have, document would distinguish the separation of the project and timeframe. And I don't have that in front. It was discussed as an option either way, if I remember correct. And then it would be up to our discretion as well as the contractor. When they come and say, well, we'll do it all, we'll save you a couple hundred thousand if we can do it all once or, but most likely because of the timeframe, they're going to be very agreeable to the two-part process. But that would be located in the bidding document, which we don't have in front of us. We don't have...
Could I make one comment?
Sure.
If I remember right, according to the plans, it must be at the discretion of the engineer whether they are able to do it yet in the fall or whether they're expected to do it in the spring. And the reason for that is we didn't want to leave it at the discretion of the contractor. If he thought it was okay to do it, the engineer will determine whether it's okay to do it.
And we're talking the asphalt, not the road.
Exactly. Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So I guess, don't want to leave the commission into anything they don't want to do, but I, I would just soon proceed with the advertisement for bids. And for whatever reason, you can always pull the process, you know, stop it. We have a meeting on June 2nd and the bid opening is what?
The bid, the bid opening will be June 11th.
June 11th.
The bids would be approved on the 19th.
So we got time to hit the brakes, but we don't have a lot of time to get the ball rolling. Yes?
Dick, did Kerry indicate to you that the state had approved the plans?
He has not directly. He just said that he had sent them off.
Right. Rick, you haven't heard either way either.
I wish I could remember the exact phrase. It was like, he was going to bring their letter of approval, but he doesn't have the, they've seen them, they've approved them, but he didn't have the, whatever you see, Larry.
Right. The letter, document.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this then. Can we approve? Yeah.
Well, we have a new person coming in the room. Are you with Civil Design?
I am.
Come on up and introduce yourself. We've got some questions.
I apologize. I was, I was an hour off today. So I'm Nathan Lund. I'm with Civil Design. I am working on the 213th Street project. Any questions that I can answer?
Well, we got a couple. Go ahead.
Have the designs been approved by the state?
I'm sorry?
Have the designs been approved by the DOT?
There is a couple of, there's questions about two pipes and the cover over the pipe at this stage that we're trying to get some answers on. Due to the constraints of the project with the right of way, we had to do a little bit of work with the end slopes on the ditches. And it consequently reduced the subgrade cover over top of the pipes. The DOT requires one foot. And so we're trying to get a variance from the DOT on that one foot. And I'm waiting to hear back from them. I would think I would get some answers back today is what I'm hoping for. So, but otherwise, yes, they, I would anticipate here in the next couple of days that I would get the approval letter from the DOT.
Okay.
You said a couple of things. What else besides the pipe?
Oh, no, that was it. There's just, there's two pipes in there that we're just trying to talk about. I had sent an email to Paula Heisinga on Thursday last week. She was out on Friday. I know she picked it up yesterday and was trying to get some answers on it. Like I say, I would anticipate that I hear something today.
So the bid will go out on the 2nd, you said? Or when will the notices go out?
We would advertise on the 28th.
Yep. Next week and then again, the first week of June.
Yep.
We'd open bids on the 11th and approve them on the 19th.
Okay. So, I mean, if we made a motion to approve the bid letting contingent upon getting the approval from the state, is that, I mean, and if we don't get it by the 28th, we just have to wait?
You know, I guess, I would say that I would be comfortable saying that we'll have all the approvals by the 28th. You know, the DOT's role in this is a cursory review on the project. But again, I know that they have some funding on this.
Well, and that's, that's my point. We have two grants, I guess, that are on this. And if it doesn't meet those grants, we won't want to lose those.
Yeah. I, I would anticipate that we would have everything by the 28th and we should be good to go.
See, the only risk we have is the cost of the advertising because we can't wait to, you know...
We can't wait, we can't wait till the 28th, obviously, to get it to the paper. Noon on Monday, next Monday is our deadline to get it to the papers. So we have a little, we have a little flexibility. Oh, Monday's a holiday. So it'll be Friday, then I'll have to get it to the papers.
Yep. And I believe that you have the...
I do have the advertisement. Yep. It's ready to go.
So it's, to pull the bids, let's say there was a problem, highly remote, and we wanted to pull the bids, we'd have the cost of the advertising. And I guess whether the commission would want to proceed because of timing.
Again, I don't want to make it too big of a problem if you think it's not going to be a big issue either if we...
Yeah. I don't foresee it being an issue.
You feel, you feel comfortable that we'll know by the 22nd because that's Friday?
Yeah. And when we get done here, I'll run back and send an email to Paula and just see where they're at in the process.
Okay. And if you would be so kind as to then email Stacy so that she knows?
Certainly.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? The bidding document, we had a little question. Is it engineer your discretion on the asphalt application in 2015 or 2016?
The way that is written is that they can pave in 2015, but if the contractor chooses to wait until 2016, that they have to maintain the roadway. They have to plow it and they have to maintain dust control. And then the asphalt and striping project has to be finished by June 1 of 2016.
So the... Contractor.
Contractor's discretion as to whether they pave this year or not.
That's going to make our bid go high. They've got to keep that all winter.
I'm sorry.
Our bid will be high if they have to maintain that all winter.
Yeah. So that would make them want to put the asphalt down.
In 15, absolutely. That would make us want the asphalt to be down in 15.
Yeah. Which is a plus and a minus, I guess.
It's going to be a short, short time period for construction. You know, it depends how fast it gets cold, whether or not they can even get asphalt down.
Why would we make them maintain it? Because they could put the asphalt down if we gave them the option to put it in later?
Well, really, they own the project until such time as, as the county would, would take over the final product. And so then maintenance and those kinds of things become their responsibility.
I think Commissioner Miller is exactly right. If they don't get a chance, their time to get it down, we may, they may not even bid it. I mean, just to say, we can't get it done this year. We're not going to bid this one because I don't want to take care of a road over the winter. You know, I don't know if that's such a good idea. But if we, well, so now if we did a separate bid, where we did a bid here for building the road, everything except for asphalt, we could do a bid for that, build that road, and then open for bids for the asphalt and striping first in 16.
You could do that. I would anticipate that that would probably be a little bit more expensive for you just because you're paying a mobilization cost twice. Whereas if we do it all as one contract, then, then you only pay your mobilization once. Whereas if we do it all as one contract, then you only pay your mobilization once. And the discussions that we've had internally in our office was to make that paving the contractor's discretion. And I'm not sure where that conversation originated from. If that was a conversation that had been had here, if that was something between Carrie and Dick, that I'm not 100% sure of. If we need to, if you guys are uncomfortable with the wording on the maintenance, you know, Carrie and I can sit down and talk about that and we can develop some wording to try and alleviate some of those things as far as a maintenance aspect.
Yes, Dick.
If I remember right, Nate, the timeliness of our going to bid this late in the construction season, we felt just the opposite of Stephanie, that it might encourage competitiveness because they would realize they absolutely do not have to get it done yet this fall. However, just like she says, it's got to go into the, it's going to add to the cost. But I think that's why we were talking originally, that we would give them the option because otherwise, if their plates are full already, they're not, if they do turn in a bid, it's going to be very significant. And especially if they've got that deadline to meet. So that's what I remember anyway.
Yeah, now that you say that, I think I seem to remember a conversation concerning that.
That's right. But we're between a rock and a hard place putting this bid out this late, aren't we? I mean, I think.
Rick, I can ask you a question. When would the majority of the construction take place? Your cement coming in, gravel, the large equipment?
Everything would be done by the end of 2015 with the exception of the asphalt if they would not pave it. So we would, we would have everything done. The only thing that they would come in and do then, if it sat over the winter, would be to come back and pave it and stripe it.
But the reason I ask, Rick, if there's a certain date that majority of the heavy equipment and the construction was done on-site, then it would be permitted to pave it. I mean, you know, to get it done yet this year. But that's up to the scheduling of work at the plant, too.
I think that most of the heavy hauling will be done. More concrete, a lot of concrete will be this summer and into the fall. I don't envision pouring any concrete at all this winter. But, you know, regardless, I think we've coordinated, you know, our trucks, people who are trucks for our road use agreement for any construction season, too.
And the asphalt depends on the weather. I mean, nobody can predict that.
Typically, you know, first part of November seems to be a pretty good cutoff date.
Would you anticipate if we were to split the bids?
I'm sorry?
Do you anticipate if we were to split the bids, that we'd maybe get more people interested in just building the road? That our bids may be more competitive at building the road than it would be just, you know, during the asphalt?
I'm not sure that I really know how to answer that. I don't know what to tell you there. You know, it could go either way at this stage. So I don't know that.
I think we should go ahead and put it out to bids contingent on receipt of the acceptance letter from the DOT. And let's see what we get. So I will move that we put it out to bids contingent on the acceptance letter from the DOT.
Stacy would receive a letter of approval prior or?
Well, either Stacy or CDI. CDI will be the one that gets it.
We would probably get that and, you know, the correspondence, whether it's, you know, just a cover letter or if it's, you know, a note signed on the plan set, I can send that over to you so that you have it.
And we have a week, week and a few days before.
No, we.
No, we have Friday.
Yeah, till Friday, 22nd.
This Friday.
Yes. Next week's got a holiday in there. Motion was made. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Ryan, did you?
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah. I guess just off of my thing here is I am concerned that of the wording that's in the contract that's going to require the contractor to take care of the road.
Yep.
I just, I'm not sure. I want to get the bids. I want to see what they come back at. And, but if they do come back higher because of that situation and that, or we don't get as many bids and we're higher there, I would be all for splitting them up and saying, "All right, let's bid the road and then we'll bid the asphalt later in the process to do it the next spring" to take, to leave that contractor from having to take care of that road in the middle of the winter and taking all the responsibility for that. But again, I'd be open for, see what the bids come now.
In most cases where you have a roadway that's, that, you know, is finished to the gravel surfacing or to the base course, and then it sits for the year, in most cases, the contractors take care of those. You know, they do maintain those, you know, if they're going to be open for traffic, then that's a typical contractor responsibility.
All right, let's give it a try.
Okay, any other question or discussion on the motion?
The only thing I'd have to say, the worst-case scenario, if, okay, we got it all paved and everything, and we have to do a bunch of heavy hauling or anything, we can look at an alternative route and do a hall road agreement somewhere to get heavy equipment or in the future. I mean, that's an option, so.
Yes, and we need to keep in mind, we've got to deal with those people on having a road out there, so. Okay, any other question or discussion? Harry Dunn, call the roll, please.
Pierce. Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Wyse.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we let you off the hot seat.
Yeah.
And Deputy State's Attorney Howard, would it be on June 2nd that we would have a possible purchase agreement of right-of-way?
The purchase agreement's done. I emailed you yesterday.
I mean, approved that we spend the money.
The resolution will be brought at the June 2nd meeting.
Okay, thank you. Purchase agreement's in, so we're good to go there. I just wanted to. Okay?
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay. We still have one department head yet. Can you put that stuff on the screen when you get a chance? Sorry.
Good morning. Just to give you an update on our office, I see Stacy pulled up our finance officer's report and the be-it-noted items are the auditor's account with the treasure, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of taxes collected. So that will be the be-it-noted items for the minutes. And also to give you an update, we got new credit card machines in our office. And the last few days of taxes, when you tried to swipe the card, it did not work. And we had to go online and do it all online. So it was kind of time-consuming. And we, Sean worked with us. He was really great to help out. And he worked with the credit card company. And they came out with a new credit card machine that will read the chip that is going to be coming as of October. And so with the new credit card machine coming, they would not update ours that we had. So we did order new credit card machines. And in between the time that we got those, we did do the other credit cards online, but it was just kind of time-consuming. So we do have the new credit cards that read the chip. At this point, we haven't really had any come in with the chip as of yet, but we have it when that is available. And we went, Kristen, Witchy, and myself went to Pier to the Spring Conference. And it was a good conference. We heard a lot about Senate Bill 1. We had different meetings with DOT, with Legislative Audit, and the Department of Revenue. There's still some ideas or whatever that they aren't all agreeing. So as they get more time to look at all the Senate Bill 1, we will all be, they'll be meeting and trying to tell us what we have to do. But at this point, we did have some varying things that they are not in agreeance yet on how to proceed with Senate Bill 1. And then Kristen and I stayed on Friday for the Secretary of State's workshop on the street master and also total vote. So that was a good meeting also. And Kristen is learning the process. She was helping Stacy when Stacy was still in our office, but I'm kind of getting up to speed on both of them as well. And also when we were out there, there was discussion on with Senate Bill 1, with the excise tax going to 4%. It is on all vehicles, motorcycles, that type of vehicles, but nothing on boats increased to the 4%. That's still at the 3%. So they are talking that maybe in a cleanup effort, they will add the boats next year to the 4%. And then it would be the same straight across the board.
My boat doesn't use the roads. My trailer does, though.
Yeah, well, yeah. But anyway, that is a discussion item. And another discussion item was the historical plates. We, through the state, sell historical plates. It's a one-time fee of $10. And they have to be 30 years old, the vehicles. And the criteria is they can only go back and forth to the gas station, parades, shows. But I don't think it's an issue on our side of the state, but on the western side of the state, they don't have law enforcement that will stop these historical plates from being used all the time. So I know there's one county out there that says that they have a person that has 15 historical vehicles and they never license their vehicle. So it's just a one-time $10 fee. So they are looking at doing something different with those. Either the criteria has to change or they are going to look at, you know, maybe a personalized plate, which would be a $25 charge plus a regular fee. So they were quite adamant that they would like to change that because the veterans are charged more than the historical plates. So that is something that we'll look at for possible legislation next year. And anything else that you have any questions, Paula?
You will be getting chips. There are getting to be more and more and more. I know we're taking a bunch at the greenhouse, so.
Okay.
They'll be coming. And we're all going to have to have.
We are, we are. And in the machines, just like probably out there, there's an insert where they go in, too.
And they're faster and easier, the chips are, than the other ones.
And I, you know, we probably have had some. When I was gone last week, I'm sure that there was probably some. They just got in on Tuesday before we left, the new machines. So there probably was. I guess I haven't really talked to the staff on that, so. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Does the commission wish to take a break before regular business or? Yes. Okay. One solid yes. That's good enough. So we'll be back in about five minutes or seven minutes. Item A is an action to approve the renewals of retail on, by the way, if I hear a negative, we will go to Rocco. Action to approve the renewals of retail on, off-sale malt beverage in combination of retail on, off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses. Farm and, farm wine license for Brookings Country Club, Smoke and Pub and Grub, Meadow Creek, RJ's Gas Stop, and Skyview. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Miller?
Second.
Krogman. Questions, discussion?
Yeah. Two are, two are on next week because we had to do a public notice in the paper for those. Those will be at the next, at next week's meeting.
No.
No. Not within the last licensing period, no.
Not since the last, in the timeframe late, late part of revenue. Okay, any other question, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, same sign. B, action to approve Resolution Number 15-31, a resolution to rescind the burn ban enacted on April 3, 2015.
No move.
Second.
Krogman, Miller. Any question or discussion?
Talk to us, Robert.
Yes, the county fire departments all met on May 14, and they discussed it, and they made a recommendation that day, that it was discussed that we was putting it on the agenda, and they all, all backed the decision.
Okay. Any other question, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you. Item C, action to approve Agreement Number 15-51, a service agreement with Certified Languages International for Interpreter Services.
No move.
Moved, by Pierce, and seconded by Jensen. We had information at the last meeting. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. D, action to approve an appointment to the 4-H Promotion and Expansion Committee, as you see in front of you, Deb Ford.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any question or discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. E, action to approve Resolution Number 15-32, a resolution authorizing the purchase of concrete pipe and concrete bridge material based upon the price established through the County of Spink, South Dakota bid process.
So move.
Second.
Jensen, Miller. Any question or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. F, action to declare items a surplus. I believe it's file cabinets, if I remember right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Krogman, Miller. Any question or discussion?
I was just curious why they weren't being sold on auction.
They are, um, they're old and have no use. They actually sat outside all winter, during the winter season. They were, had been, prior to that, they'd been down the 1921 garage forever. I don't, I don't even know if we know what their original use was ever for. So they're in pretty rough shape. There's really, we wouldn't get much, if anything, for them at auctions, so we're going to do the scrap metal.
Okay. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. G, action to approve Agreement Number 15-52, a right-of-way agreement with Sioux Valley Energy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Krogman, Jensen, oh, Krogman, Jensen, sorry. Any question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. H, action to approve Agreement Number 15-53, a right-of-way agreement with Sioux Valley Energy, as on the screen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Pierce. Any question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. I, action to approve Agreement Number 15-54, a right-of-way agreement with Sioux Valley Energy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Krogman. Any question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. J, action to approve Agreement Number 15-55, right-of-way agreement with XL Energy.
No. So move.
Krogman?
Second.
Miller? Second. Question or discussion on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. K, action to approve Agreement 15-56, a right-of-way agreement with XL Energy.
So moved.
Krogman?
Second.
Pierce?
Second. Is there any question or discussion on this motion?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. L, action to approve Agreement Number 15-57, a right-of-way agreement with East River Electric Power Co-op Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Jensen, Krogman. Question or discussion?
I think, you know, if, if we have the viewing public thinking, we're flying through these. We have all this information in our packet, and these last ones are, are for overhead transmission lines. So just a little note of explanation.
Okay, thank you. Any other question or discussion on the motion? Mr. Jensen, are you okay? All right. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. M, action to approve Agreement Number 15-58, right-of-way agreement with East River Electric Power Co-op Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Krogman?
Second.
Pierce. Question or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. N, action to approve Agreement Number 15-59, a right-of-way agreement with East River Electric Power Co-op Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Jensen. Any question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. O, action to approve Agreement Number 15-60, a right-of-way agreement with East River Electric Power Co-op Incorporated.
So moved.
Krogman?
Second.
Miller? Second. Question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Commission Department Director report, and you can do that from there, or down there, or wherever you want to go.
My report was included in your packet. Just a couple of things to note. I attended the Chamber's Leader Cast event a week ago Friday. This was something that was broadcast actually all over the world, and you sit and listen to different speakers. Very, very good, very interesting. Some of the speakers were, one of them was a 17-year-old girl who had been shot in the head by the Taliban, returning, trying to return home from attending school. She spoke for 17. It was, you would never have believed that this, this gal was 17 years old. Peyton Manning, quarterback for Denver Broncos, spoke. He's very entertaining. And then I think the highlight was former Mayor Rudy Giuliani spoke as well. So that was a very good event. We kind of talked about this at my last report. We received another anonymous letter. Is it, is it the board's wish? Can we get a consensus that you don't want to see those? Or what is your feeling on them?
I'll just say she called me, and I says, well, bring it, and we'll see what the, because we kind of had a little chat about it, but we didn't have a serious discussion about the procedure of anonymous letters, so please go ahead.
The discussion was that people need to put their names on their letters because then we can speak to them. But I think we need to see all of the letters that we get, definitely. However, I don't, I don't feel that we have to speak to them because we don't even know who's, who we're talking to. But I do believe that we need to see them.
Okay.
But I don't think anonymous letters should be in the packet or posted on the website.
I don't either.
If somebody doesn't sign their name, it should not be a public document.
That's right.
Okay.
Krogman, Jensen, your thoughts?
I agree with Stephanie. I'd like to see them, but.
Don't include them in the packet.
Right.
I think the thing that needs to be said, and I haven't seen this one myself, and I'm not sure whether it was a follow-up to the previous one, but we are all available. We're in the phone book. We have email address. I've received emails about the hospital. I've had phone calls about the hospital. And, and I think if I came to represent their point of view, if they asked me, I would, if they don't want their name used, I wouldn't use their name. They can remain anonymous, but not to me, because they're going to say who they are. But to you, I would say, I received a phone call, and I trust you guys would be doing the same thing. So I think the opportunity for the public is plenty to give their input. It's, it's just, anonymous letters just open up a can of worms that can be quite detrimental. And so I guess I agree with the opinions expressed.
And it has always been the case. I mean, anytime any of us say that we have received a call, we never, we don't give the names.
Unless they want, they don't care.
Yeah, but, I mean, it is, it's a, pretty much a given that we do not say who, who called. We, we say we received a call from a citizen that such and such. So, but, but I, I believe that we need to see the letters, at least.
Yeah, and I guess what you do with it in your mind is up to you. I guess, former mayor of Brookings, if it came with a letter and it didn't have anything, he didn't even start to read it, because, you know, that was just his procedure. But, so do you have clear direction?
Yes.
Yeah, bring the letter and share it, and, but don't put it in the packet.
Deputy Finance Officer Kristin Witsch, she and I are working on a letter to send to STSU regarding the vote centers. We're still working on that. She was out most of last week attending a spring workshop, so we'll have something for you, for your approval at the next meeting. Also spoke with Todd Case about the hydrologist issue that we spoke about at the work session. You know, they're more than willing to help. He suggested visiting with Jay Gilbertson at East Dakota, who might have some more knowledge on this, and I can get in touch with him if you wish.
Jay is not a hydrologist.
Well, I actually, to kind of help her out, because we were talking about hydrologists. I looked it up, and the reason Jay probably isn't, the state of South Dakota doesn't license hydrologists, and you can't call yourself a hydrologist unless you're licensed. Some states do, some states don't. A license, we, School of Mines has a degree in it, which surprised me. And our current Kent Johnson from Banner, it's a CFM, so I looked that up, Certified Flood Manager or something. And, and that's kind of an online course. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm not saying it's to minimize it, but, so if we go down the road, we need to decide how much expertise we want, but I could not find anywhere the state of South Dakota licensing, and I did find other states that do license. And so maybe that's why Jay, he may have all the knowledge of a licensed hydrologist, but doesn't have, he's in the state of South Dakota, he can't get licensed or certified or whatever. So where we want to go with that, I guess I would listen to Todd Case's group, I guess, and start with that. So Case, did you want to?
Well, you know, we've always had access to Jay. We don't get anywhere.
I guess it depends, you know, all fairness, I wasn't involved with it. Was he asked the right questions, or told to give the right answer? Maybe there's a liability problem without being a licensed, I mean-
Possibly.
That could be. So you're, you're going to visit with Jay yet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so just, you kind of got to feel what our concerns are, and see what Todd says, okay?
Resolutions from 2014 and then year-to-date for 2015 are now on the website. All of the ordinances back to 1979 are now on the website as well, and links to them. So they're, they're not in by year, they're in by kind of categorized by the, the type of ordinance or the subject. So, and there are some that are under a title of miscellaneous because they really didn't fit anywhere. So take a look at that.
Did you come across any that horses shouldn't spit on the screen? I mean, do we have, should we have, if we ever get an intern, somebody to go through, because the state legislature does this, cities do this, they go through and find the stuff that doesn't exist.
And I don't know. We didn't sit down and read them all, word for word. We looked at titles and tried, you know, if we, if the title didn't give us much of direction, then we kind of got into it a little bit. We didn't, but we didn't sit down and read them word for word. So. There are no, four notices of public hearings from the city of Volga about tax incremental districts that are taking place over there coming up. Civic Plus, our online website company, I included our service and license agreement in your packet, just for you to look at, because you had asked me about that at the last meeting.
Do you have any questions on that? Because, okay, I, I do. I, I saw what the first year was, as I went through the whole thing, and maybe I just missed it, but I was looking for what our annual is, the, the price that 20-some thousand was for the first year. I didn't, and the contract, you know, we can basically get out of it now with proper notification.
But they can, they also will update that.
Well, that's, that's-
And I think there's an update coming up next year, in 2016.
I was just going to ask you where we were in our 40, was it 48 months? Or what was that, 48, what was it?
Well, there's, to get out of it, there's so many days' notice and things like that. I can't-
Yep, this wasn't getting out. I mean, if we want to update it, we would be better off to stay with these people to update.
I'm trying, I think that was signed by Deanna Sanam and 12, yeah. So we've shot by, well, it was, unless it was 48 months. I don't have my-
But I know 2016, there's some, there's a redesign in the works for that.
Okay.
And it was-
Well, I guess-
In excess of $30,000 to create the website, to get it established. As you can see up on the screen in front of you, the annual website hosting fees is about $5,000, it was $5,300.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would leave that recommendation to you, Stacy, and Sean, because I don't use the website, or public if they comment about it. I get more enough information out here. I don't need to go to the website, but, but the, the public.
Do you ever hear any comments from the public on the website?
No.
Does it keep track? Does it count how many users?
Yes, and I could, you know, I could get that information. I know we can pull down what they go to. It, it was interesting, one of the, one of the, one of the most visited portions of our website is information about the detention center. So, yeah, it was, it was, so we can look at that and see what, so, you know, we can, during a redesign too, or if we want to make some changes based on what people are looking at, we can do that too. So, but yes, we can get some of that information. I can have Michelle even pull some of that down.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Let me write that. I included a copy of HB 1106. I think that was sent out by the SDA, CCC had, I think there was note of it in the county newsletter that our association president had made some comments about this particular statute. So Tom asked that I, I get that, and I put that in the packet too, which-
And I think you all received an explanation from Chris Jacobson. When I read it in their newspaper, it made no sense to me. And I'm still not sure, after, I need a lawyer. And I'm still not sure, after, I need a lawyer, but it, I, one time when we were planning zoning, remember, we had that do's and don'ts about seeing a site before having knowledge about what something was going on? I think it addresses that, but that, that may need further clarification from Todd Kayes, and for our planning and zoning people particularly, and us maybe, as far as looking at things.
Do you research?
Well, that's been my, you know, how do you make a decision without doing research?
Right.
Yeah. It's one thing if they take you out for a steak dinner, the other is to go drive by and look at it, or something. But hopefully that we get this clarified.
Otherwise, just some upcoming dates. What I had on there was the eight-county meeting from yesterday, those of you that attended that. And then Monday is Memorial Day, so the offices will be closed. And the only other thing I had coming up is just a reminder of those upcoming budget dates, so they're on your calendar. I'll keep reminding you of those as those get closer and closer. Everything is due to be turned in by the end of May, and then Vicki and I will be busy getting all of that information put together for you. As of right now, unless something comes up, I'm planning on taking Friday off this week too. Looks like it's going to be not very nice weather for the weekend, and my kids are off of school as of today, so I'm going to spend some time with them for the long weekend. Unless there's something else that comes up, then I may make my, change my plans too, so. Otherwise, that's all I had, unless you had any other questions of me.
Okay. Any questions for Stacy? Deputy State's Attorney report.
Regarding no Vida, I'm still working with Everest on an easement for the Culver, the mining that takes place under the road. We are having some back and forth, so there is some, some issues there, but eventually I'll be presenting that to you, hopefully at the next meeting. Regarding 213th, as I previously stated, you'll have a resolution at the next meeting authorizing the purchase of land from the Andersons, the only landowner involved in this process. And then I will be able to finalize that with them following the meeting. Additionally, I think that plat is going to be heard at the June 2nd Planning and Zoning Meeting, so likely the following commission meeting, probably the 19th, it would come before this commission. Does that sound right, Bob? And just as a recap, Clyde and I attended our annual State's Attorneys Conference in Deadwood, I guess that was last week, and it was a good conference, as usual. I was elected to the Board of Directors for the South Dakota State's Attorneys Association, so I will be traveling a little bit, just, I think they have quarterly meetings, so a few of those throughout the year. And then additionally, I won a sponsored trip to do a National District Attorney Association training, so that'll be a national training through our national organization, great opportunity, no cost to the county, and so at some point I will be traveling to do that. That's it.
Any negotiations with Everest? Is there anything in there about the commissioner's ability to have access to fish on their ponds?
You know, I just didn't even broach that topic.
Well, if you get the opportunity, throw that one in, that'd be awesome.
Sneak that in there.
Do what the old-fashioned would get permission. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Reports will start down, Leanne.
On May 5th, we had the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and there were a number of interesting things, and I think we had a presentation by one couple that came in that is looking at setting up a type of educational resource egg place out in the county, and they'll be coming back later. They didn't, they didn't make application, they just wanted to give us information. And they may be going to hold special events there, weddings, et cetera, where they'd want to serve alcohol. And like I said, I'm not sure our alcohol ordinance contemplated that, and we might be looking at that again after, after we get down the road and see if they actually come back. On May 8th, I went to the hearing over at the courthouse in front of Judge Foley on our Lake Hendricks project, and had quite a conversation with our counsel, Jack Heeb afterwards, and we'll discuss all that in, in executive session, but that was very interesting. On May 13th, Commissioner Jensen took me on a tour of the Beta offices, and we went through the Highway Department complex with, with Dick, and, and talked about use of our facilities, and what we're going to be doing in the future, and that was great. And then on the 13th, I met with everybody except for, I think, Commissioner Krogman, we met with the city officials over in Volga to look at Highway 5, and what's going to be happening with some potential sidewalk issues as relates to that particular road. On May 13th, I attended the Chamber Women in Leadership Luncheon out at Swiftel, and as I indicated, when Sonya was here afterwards, I went over to the Resource Center, and I was just concerned about some of our maintenance issues that are going on at the Swiftel Center. And since I sit on the Swiftel Advisory Board for the Commission, I went and talked to Dave Bittler, and he said they would start making those fixes on the holes in the sheet rock this week, and that we're going to get those things taken care of. And I have a concern that at some point we need to address, and I, and I think we should be approaching the Resource Center like it's always going to be ours at this point, because we don't know any differently. And I don't know who it is on the county side that's responsible for talking to the Swiftel Center and making sure things are happening and moving forward on our maintenance and repair issue. Who is, who is that responsible person? I don't know the answer to that. But I don't think it's Sonya. Yeah, that's not, not in her job description, and do we have anybody that's taking care of these matters? I don't think we do, and, and maybe we need to make a decision on that.
And I think the question is, Stacy, do you remember if we have a maintenance agreement with, with Swiftel? Do we have an actual agreement?
Well, we pay twenty thousand dollars a year for, for maintenance, so we should have.
Sixteen hundred a month.
Right.
Do you remember?
I think part of the maintenance agreement that we do have with them, because we do pay them so much, or they, yeah, so much annually, that they are just supposed to be taking care of it. I think, I think we need to revisit that, that agreement, and, and then, once we revisit that agreement, we can set out some parameters, and then moving forward, if that's something you want me to keep on top of, I can sure do that. But I think, I think that agreement should be revisited.
But even.
I think it was done in 2012, so it's, you know, three years.
That's the addendum to the previous addendum.
Right.
Which is previous to the, the one that was originally signed, so.
And I, I don't think there's anything that says, "You shall fix the holes in the sheet rock," you know, I, I just, it's, it's, they do the setup and tear downs and that kinds of things, and.
But don't they do cleaning?
They've done the cleaning. But Stacy, don't they, if there's a special, say they fix a bathroom or whatever, doesn't the county get billed separate for that?
No.
I don't know. I didn't think so, but I don't.
No.
I thought they handled everything, basically. We give them this, they handle it.
I haven't seen anything coming through.
Because I believe now there's, there's an issue, the other day, the, the roof is leaking again. It was dripp.
And that we did get billed for.
Right, but there is another issue now, they've removed some tiles the other day, and there's water dripping on the counter. I mean, just like revisit it and see what's actually covered under maintenance agreement. If there's, if it gets to such a dollar amount that we get separately billed, that's, we need to know that.
And, and I think, you know, those are all issues, but I just think we need to have somebody on our staff that's looking at what's going on, and making sure the right things are happening, and, and I think I just heard Stacy volunteer to be the person to do that. Is that right? Great. Could you let us know what our maintenance contract says? Wonderful.
And it's more in the hallway, it's in the bathroom. That was from the previous leak, so we had to pay for that roof that was leaking. I'm just wondering if we have to pay for the damage that was caused by that, so, that, that, that's going to take some good looking there, Stacy, and I think Leanne, or myself, or any commissioners will.
To go back in history a little bit, if I may, the first time that roof leaked, they, the Swiftel people did have the bathroom fixed, and, and thought they had the roof fixed, then it leaked again. And after that, nothing else was done. So, and we did not pay extra money to have that done. So, having said that, I, I, we, we have not put in more money than the allotted amount that we pay yearly, other than the roof repair, which we did, which was, has always been agreed upon that we would have to pay our portion of that. So, there should be, I would hope that we have some type of a guarantee from the roofing, roofing company that did the repair. The roof obviously is not fixed, they need to come back and take care of that before we do a lot of fixing, or Swiftel does a lot of fixing. I mean, we need to make sure that it's not going to leak again. So, you know, if you, Stacy, if you would follow up with Swiftel on whether or not we have a guarantee on, from that roofing company, that we need to get that fixed, so that it doesn't leak. And then, then we need to look into either setting up a maintenance, I think setting up an actual maintenance agreement, because I don't think, I mean, I don't think that addendum addresses what Commissioner Pierce is talking about.
As long as we've got somebody looking into it, that's great. Thank you. Then on May 14th, I attended the fraud prevention, computer fraud prevention luncheon at First Bank and Trust, which was interesting. And we were given a lot of information, and one of the things that I, I was sitting through and thinking about this, and during the presentation, it just makes you depressed and worried, I'll just tell you that. And I wondered if the Commission would be interested, because I would be interested, in perhaps Sean coming to us and telling us what measures that we've got in place that are protecting our computer security issues. I, I would just like to have an overview on that, and I don't know, and I'll say this, I'm not sure that's a public information session because of the security issues, but I would like to know what we're doing. And maybe that would be something that would be appropriate for an executive session. Abby, do you have a thought on that? Can we know about our security issues in, in private? And does, does everybody else have an interest in knowing? I just want to know which things.
I think the law was written before there was electronic security issues, to be honest with you, the other four categories.
I guess I would want to review what information Sean has, or he would be presenting, and then I could make a determination of how best to present it.
Is that something the Commission is interested in knowing about? I just think we need to be a little proactive on this, and I, I don't know that we are being, we may very well be, but it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm interested in knowing, but my problem is understanding.
Well, Larry and I discussed that one. We weren't sure we.
He could talk about all kinds of stuff that, you know, Lingo, I wouldn't have a clue, and talk about getting smoked, I would really be eligible for it, but.
How do you feel, Stacy?
Well, there's, Sean and I have been talking too, and there's a number of things coming up regarding purchases that need to be made, that he wanted to come and sit down and try to explain where we're at better than I can, because he's the one that's knowledgeable about it. So, depending on what, and some of that wouldn't, most of what he has to say is not material for executive session. The security issues, we can put something together and give that information to Abby and get an opinion on her from that. But he would like to sit down sometime soon and discuss some of these upcoming things that need to be done even yet, maybe this year. And then, of course, when we get into budget time, you know, he and I are going to be sitting down, going through that IT budget anyway, and, and discussing some things, but then to give, get you all caught up on where we are, because I think if you looked at our work plan that we presented a couple of weeks ago, he's talking about server replacements every, every year, things of that nature. Right now, we're looking at licensing requirements, things that probably have to be done yet here in 2015. So, the bigger picture, we want to have a time for him to sit down, and I don't know if you want to wait until budget time to do that, or if you want to plan a separate, maybe a work session on technology at an upcoming meeting to do that. I think it might be a good idea to do that even before budget time, because it might, it's probably a whole lot to consume, rather than do it at a budget hearing, you all already have that, that, that knowledge going into budget hearings on the 15th of June. So, along with that, we can get some information to Abby and see if it's, some, some of that could be an executive session, if you wanted to discuss the security that is in place, if it qualifies. But otherwise, we'd like to sit down and, and get in, give you some of the information that we're looking at, too.
Sounds like a work session.
Music to Ryan's ears.
Anything else?
And just yesterday, I was at the eight-county meeting in Flandre with Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Jensen, and it was my first time with eight-county meeting, it was very interesting.
May 13th also, went with Leanne, we viewed the Beta facility and also the Highway facility. Also later in the morning there, we went over to Volga, safety concerns on Samara Avenue there, they're well noted. Hate seeing kids walking on the road, and hopefully we can get something done there in the future to remedy the situation. Also, later in that day, I talked to Matt Johnson, engineer with the state watching over the sign program, talked to him about the issue with the mail not being delivered and such with these minimal maintenance signs. He had received, from the federal level, the ability to move some of those signs to accommodate the mail delivery, so they'll be working on that now. Unfortunately, last Friday was his last day of employment with the DOT, he's going to the private firm in Sioux Falls, so it's being turned over to one of the engineers out here at the local office. Ten of the eight-county meeting, Todd Kayes had an interesting overview of other counties, what they offer, employee benefits, wages, numerous other things. Stephanie has a book that covers all the counties, it'd be interesting when we all get to look at it. Last night, I briefly stopped at the Brookings County 4H Way In, it was a little chilly out there, I just stopped momentarily, I was on my way to a visitation, so that's all I have.
The notebook that, that Larry's talking about, Laura said she has that in digital, that, that salary survey, I would be interested in having a digital copy of that, I don't know if everybody else. It is, it's very interesting as, how it's broken out by county, and, and it says exactly what we're doing versus everybody else, and so the pages that we had received copies of had a lot of good material.
Yeah, I, I think it would be prudent for all of us to have that digital copy, albeit some of the figures are skewered a little bit.
Stephanie, before you get going, I got another question for Larry. On this, Leanne asked me a question, I couldn't really answer it, and maybe I'm picking up the things differently. This Beta move potential is later than sooner, or sooner than later?
I'm either finding out about that tomorrow, or the following Wednesday, we, they haven't informed me if the meeting's tomorrow or the following Wednesday, and I will see how they're doing on, I mean, it's one of those deals, they're, they're looking for a site that will work for them also, so.
Yeah, and I guess funding and everything, in the back of my mind, the way the federal funding, where a lot of their help would come from, it went, is just drying up every which way, and I just, in my mind, I'd kind of moved it to later, but I, I want to be ready if it's sooner than later, I guess, so I appreciate the update. Thanks.
I did have one addition, I do have a schedule of when the STIP Planning Development's going to be, I do have a schedule I picked up yesterday from Christie Jacobson, where they're held and when.
May 5, I attended.
May 5, I attended our work session following our meeting. The 12th, we had a Weed Board meeting. Everything is calibrated. Most of the employees are on board. We're still short one employee. They're narrowing down which townships want the spring and the gophers. And he, Gary, introduced the new weed supervisor, Misty Moser. On May 13th, I was with the other commissioners at Volga, discussing their issue. On the 18th was the eight county meeting. We had some real good discussion, and, and Todd went through the, the survey that they, the wage and benefit survey. And in addition, he talked about the county bridge improvement grant plans. And there was a timeline there that I had copied and given to, to Dick, so he has that information. So that was interesting. In addition to those, I had, as did a lot of the commissioners, I think, had numerous calls regarding hospital funding, both pros and cons. So, people are paying attention and listening. We'll have to deliberate carefully, I think.
Um, well, mine was a little slower week. I was out of town all last week, and didn't have too much. I have meetings coming tomorrow. E-911, ICAP, BDC, all back-to-back. So, that's why I don't have too much to report, because they all come on the same time. So, anyway, I'll be back next session to, to work on that one. So, but otherwise, that's about it. I wasn't able to make my Eastern Board of Mental Health meeting because of being gone, but we'll be able to get caught up there. So, that's it.
Okay, thanks. As far as meetings, PPCC, Pandemic Preparedness Coordination Committee, I attended that meeting. Health Sector POD, which is Points of Dispensing, according to Bob's acronym book that he gave me. They discussed at great length, they're gonna participate in the August 13th Tabletop Exercise on their own. As, and the number one, things you don't think about, I guess, is, is the tetanus shots that will be required after a tornado. How many, where do you get all of it? Who's dispensing them? You got people that are in the debris, that are homeowners. Then you got the volunteers, and apparently, never occurred to me how many tetanus shots you would have to have. So, but anyway, they're gonna partake in, in that exercise. Yesterday morning, I visited with Nancy Swanson from the South Dakota 4-H Foundation, and she would like to come and address June 2nd, a proposal for the Outdoor Adventure Center to the Commission. So, I said, "Hello, Stacy", and we're down to time. And then I did send an email to Chris Jacobson, questioning about this county task force on the legislative side, and what, and at that time, she responded, and I think she responded to all of you, that they were gonna monitor it. They have met, and you check your phone, you've already got an email, you should.
Yes.
Email message from her, listing the dates, the next date, the who's on the committee. And so that's, you should have that message. The only thing was, it seems like it's still up in the air what they're, they're gonna talk about. And so I think we need to closely monitor it, and if you have thoughts about law, state laws concerning counties, yes.
If I could add, that was discussed yesterday, and, you know, they, because they, the topics were very, 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 very broad. I mean, there, how many were there? Several different topics that they had discussed, you know. And so the group was not interested at this point in time in, in narrowing that down, because they hadn't even appointed the people, you know, that were gonna be in it. They thought that was gonna happen yesterday. So, we did have some extensive discussion on that yesterday in the eight county meeting. And there was no interest in coming up with specific topics at that time.
The only thing that worries me is that's a quarterly meeting, that the, when we decide to get on the train, the train's left. And that being, I think that's why we need to.
Well, but, but all we have to do is talk to those people who go to our state office. That's the purpose of our state office.
Yeah, so.
To speak for us.
But at this point, hopefully Chris keeps us up to date, but there apparently is, no, it's wide open, so.
It, it was unlimited. Chris read off the list. It was everything from detention center costs and court-appointed attorneys' fees, prosecution costs, from that end, all the way through consolidation of counties, what we're doing with elections, what our Register of Deeds offices are doing. It was, everything that we do was on the list.
Well, I'm sure it's the favorite pet topic of every legislator in their district. I mean, so. Okay. Just a question for the Commission is, and then for the staff, this came, I've been meaning to ask this for a long time. I saw a program on, boy, if you get a unknown or a phone call from somebody you don't know who it is, you shouldn't be answering it on your cell phone. And we call out many times, out of this building, as unknown. And I'm wondering, do you have trouble with people responding to your phone call? Because everybody uses cell phones, and landlines are disappearing. Most time when I get a phone call, if I don't answer it, and I, I can call right back, because the number's there. And if it's a 696, I know it's you guys. I don't have to fish up a phone book. And I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we use unknown? Marty called me the other day, and it was a 696 that threw me for a loop. But he says, well, he quit using it, because people don't call back, because it's unknown, and they don't want to talk to Mr. and Mrs. Unknown. You get enough harassing phone calls. So I just opening up to you and the staff, do we want phone calls going out to our citizens that are unknown? And is there a reason that we want it that way?
Is that a program, is that a phone program that's doing that, or?
We was told it was because of Swif, the way the SwifTeL whole phone system is in the building. It's not something that the department heads requested.
Well, I guess, once you, you have a department head meeting or whatever, you guys, if not, just, you know, kind of look into it, Stacy, I guess, if that's all right. I just think for the citizens to have an unknown phone call, a lot of times, they're not gonna, they're not gonna pick it up. One, and two, they don't know who to call back. And so, anyway, that's my thought on that. Okay. Oh, and then Stacy, thank you for sending out the work plan. I, I didn't find anything wrong. I probably would have formatted it different, but if you guys liked the way she did it, we'll stick with it. I appreciate her efforts. I think the content was very appropriate and took some work to do it, and I didn't want to ignore that. I thought about playing with it, but I haven't been on the top of my game lately, to reformat and just have a sample of something else. But I'm open to you guys' thoughts on Stacy's work, on her, on the work plan she put together. Fine? Okay. All right. Well, if anything changes, you let her know, and if I have time, I'll work something up, and I'll visit with her and see if she thinks it's any better, as the format, not the work. Okay. Okay. Did you want to talk about correspondence, or no? You, you got it in there. We're gonna go into executive session. We're down to one media. And following that executive session, we're coming back out into a work session, which will be open to the public, but we would like to meet in a, a small room, but the door will be open at that time. No action will be taken on executive session following, coming out, so we don't, won't have anything vote following. And so I'd like to move us into executive session under South Dakota codified law 125-2, Part 3, which is consulting with legal counsel. Is there, I think we need a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, just go with it.
No, you need a motion to go.
We need a motion, okay.
Second?
Moving second. Any question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post saying sign motion carries. We're going to executive session.